Good evening and welcome to our March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five council meeting. Can we have the rule call?
Councilmember Evans?
Present.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Present.
Mayor Millman?
Here.
Councilmember Bess Campbell?
Present.
Councilmember Arndt?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
All present accounted for. Can we stand for the flag salute, please? I move to accept the agenda and order and content.
Second.
I have motion of second. Any?
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion.
Okay.
I'd like to add an agenda item to discuss a moratorium pausing multifamily residential permits until such time as we vote on required affordability.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Councilmember Bess Campbell, you have floor.
Because this agenda item, the first on our agenda regarding new development on the Green Partners site came up on Thursday, it feels to me like we're going to be discussing, trying to get permits in prior to completion of mandatory affordability across the city. So my feeling is we should talk about the pros and cons of a moratorium to make sure all this work that we're doing on mandatory affordability isn't for naught because a developer slides in under the wire to get affordable housing off of their plate and they get to use it as a benefit rather than a requirement.
Any other discussion? So I'm going to oppose the motion. We, first off, we haven't decided on affordable housing across the city, as the maker of the motion stated. Second, I, I challenge the under the wire. I think the property owner bought the property in two thousand and eight. This is the second iteration of, of a project at that location, and the first one actually included ten percent affordable housing. So I'm hoping that's the direction that we go. So I'm, I'm opposed to this motion. Deputy Mayor Randolph?
A question for the city manager and staff. Has this been presented as a possible item to bring up? So do we have any research, any presentation that we can actually discuss?
To answer your question, no, I don't have any information on it.
Councilmember Bess Campbell?
The purpose of this is that we can actually discuss what the city of Billingham has done. We are allowed by right to do pauses on development for emergency situations. I would think that emergency housing and the fact that there is a housing crisis would constitute an emergency. We are already in discussions and in conversations with Planning Commission. We're moving on this path forward towards affordability, and this is just a way to make sure that we don't close the barn door after the horse has already left. Once somebody gets permits, we can't require affordability. It then becomes a benefit. I'm saying, why don't we have a discussion? We can talk about all of this. Remember, we only found out about, at least I only found out about this agenda item for Green Partners on Thursday with the rest of the public. A little bit of time to discuss potential options for requiring affordability and making sure every developer is required to give it. I don't see as too much to ask, but this council sees better, so that's council's decision. It's not mine.
Any other discussion? I know, I don't know, does this, we, we passed a rule to give council and staff significant time for a, a new agenda item. I think Councilmember Bess Campbell's had time to put this on the agenda so that we could all study it and look at it. And again, I, I anticipate council asking for at least ten percent affordable housing. That's what we had in the previous development agreement. That's what I'm going to support on the current development agreement if we get to that point. I think this is rushed when it didn't need to be. This could have made a, an agenda item so that we could have had staff report. That's the reason why our rule change was put in place, that we could have staff give us information and report on that. So I, is Mr. Ganson in the audience? Mr. Ganson, can you weigh in on if this violates our new council rule change, please?
I, the, well, if, if what you have in mind is council procedures on preparation of the preliminary agenda, that addresses that items can be placed on the preliminary agenda by majority vote of council, council consensus, any two council members, city manager, a committee or the mayor. But that's the preliminary agenda. We're talking now about the, the final agenda for this meeting, and council, other than with a special meeting, council always has the ability by majority vote to amend its agenda and add new action items. So I'm not, I'm not aware of anything procedurally that precludes adding this as an item if a majority of council votes that way.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Evans?
I'd like to amend the motion on the floor and say, and ask that we have a special study session, or we have this as an agenda topic within the next month.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion of second. Councilmember Evans?
So I think it's an important topic, and I want to make sure that we have plenty of time to bring all the information to the discussion and that we give our planning commissioners enough time to weigh in as well. And I don't think that we should just rush it at the end of our meeting tonight. I think that we should all just take a beat and really think through what we're doing and what the impacts are and make sure that we're making the right decisions for Woodinville.
Councilmember Rock?
Thank you, and I supported the amendment, the amendment for similar reasons. I think that it's a good discussion to have. I do not feel prepared to weigh in with an educated opinion tonight.
Councilmember Bess Campbell?
So the reason I asked for it tonight is because it was a preliminary discussion, as in, is this something that we can do? Yes, moratorium are allowed by state rule. This is not saying we're going to implement one. This is about talking, do we want one? By kicking it out a month, whatever we discuss with Green Partners tonight, they could very easily come in next week and file permits and not have to provide us with any affordability. That's the impetus. And having time to put this on the agenda, I found out about Green Partners on Thursday, which means I have to read the agenda and come up with options, and I brought it to the next available meeting, which is tonight, and I dealt with it publicly tonight in the way that we all should be discussing any sort of affordability. So yes, it's important that we talk about it in a preliminary sense. Do we have the stomach for it? It sounds like this council has the stomach for saying they're for it, but kicking the can down the road, and I don't think that that's legislation. I think that that's cowardice.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
To be quite clear, this is not about fear and cowardice. It's about preparation. If we're not prepared to have that discussion and staff isn't prepared to have this discussion, then we're having a discussion void of facts and data. Therefore, we will not get to a good endpoint. That is why I am against this motion and would love to go back to the original. And certainly, we can add this to our next meeting. I don't think we're going to get very far in the existing, in a existing Green Partners agreement, but we'll have that discussion when we get to that item.
I, I concur with Deputy Mayor. I think, I think all of this is a little bit rushed. I mean, tonight, we're going to get a presentation. It's been in our packet, and we all get to weigh in on the presentation. Green Partners had committed to ten percent affordable housing in the previous proposal, which Councilmember Bess Campbell voted against, and I, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't suspect that this council is going to accept any development agreement that doesn't include ten percent affordable housing. So I'm against the motion, and I think we should proceed on the agenda and hear what they have to say, then we get to weigh in, and, and there's no chance that Green Partners is going to put permits in as Councilmember Bess Campbell stating, and then all of a sudden it'll be approved. That's just not how this is going to work. Any other comments, discussion? Seeing none, can we get a rule call vote, please?
Point of order, are we voting on the first amendment or the second amendment?
We're voting on the second amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Bess Campbell?
Nope.
Mayor Millman?
No.
Councilmember Arndt?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor? Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. We're back to the original motion?
The original motion was to proceed with the unamended agenda in order of content.
Second.
Motion of second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to special presentations. Today, we have Waste Management providing a special presentation. Thank you for your participa- participation.
To present at council, and so we wanted to take the opportunity to kind of tell you more about what we do, who we are. And so to start off, my name is Han Kirkland. I'm a public sector manager with WM. With me tonight is your Woodinville team, North Sound District Manager Stephen Sobchak, and Rianne, who's also a public sector manager, but she started her career out with us in outreach. So she'll talk more about that later. So a little bit, a bit about myself, I started with WM about four and a half years ago, and I oversee municipal solid waste contracts and the contract with the W U T C. So yeah, so can I go to the next slide? Thank you. So at WM, we live the commitments and values of our company, day in and out. We're people-first company who succeeds with, who works to succeed with, success with integrity, if I can get the words out here. I know I'm under a time crunch, but, so we're driven by our core values of safety, customers, environment, inclusion and diversity. We take special pride in being in Woodinville because our hauling site is here and our materials recovery facility, the Cascade Recycling Center, where all of Woodinville's recyclables are processed, is actually in Woodinville as well. I personally love Woodinville, some districts more than others, and spend way too much time here on the weekends. But yes, we are a proud member of the chamber and contribute about five thousand annually in in-kind services to support the chamber's summer concerts, festival and winter fest. And so, slide please. Yeah. So a little bit overview of WM and Woodinville. So we provide recycling, yard waste, solid waste services to residential, commercial and roll-off customers here. We service the city of Woodinville under the Washington Utilities Transportation Commission, so W U T Cs, and we operate that under a G certificate, is what it's called. So residents receive, receive weekly garbage and yard waste services for subscribers, and every other week, recycling. And as I've said before, your trash is taken to King County disposal facilities, and the recyclables are processed here in Woodinville at the Cascade Recycling Center. So we collect your trash and recycle and yard waste with trucks that are run on compressed natural gas, C N G, which is fueled by renewable natural gas recovered from our landfills. And residential customers are given a rebate based on the value of the commodities collected. And that rebate calculation is determined independent of the collection rates and is adjusted annually. Next slide, please. And while I'm here, I wanted to just touch a little bit on the RSA partnership that we have. And so that RSA stands for the Revenue Sharing Agreement, and it's a partnership between King County, Snohomish and Spokane counties. We've been, it's been in effect here for about fourteen years in King County and Snohomish, and about seven years in Spokane. And the RSA is funded by a portion of that revenue, up to fifty percent, is generated from the sales of recyclables, and it's put into a recycling education fund. And the funds are used to increase recycling education, research, innovative programs for the residential and multifamily sectors. And their goals is to increase recycling, decrease contamination, reduce food waste and advance access and education for all. So there is a website there, if you have the time, and I know you guys are all really busy, check it out sometimes to see the exciting work we're doing in the community to really get out there in the U T C area. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Stephen real quick to talk a little bit about our operations.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Stephen Sobchek. I'm the district manager of our WM North Sound location, like Han said, based in Woodinville. Prior to becoming the district manager there, I was the manager of our Marysville and Skagit location. I assumed the role in June of two thousand and twenty-four. I look forward to continuing our partnership and servicing this community. In Woodinville, we have roughly sixteen, sixteen drivers that service this area week in and week out. With that, those sixteen drivers bring two hundred and twenty-six years of driving experience to the community. We are primarily servicing these customers on Tuesdays and Fridays. We touch roughly eight thousand residential containers during that time and six hundred and eighty-five commercial steel containers. One thing that we wanted to talk about was our inclement weather protocol. So hopefully, we're past the wintery season and we won't see any more snow or ice. But from an operations perspective, when we see any inclement weather on the horizon, my team of managers and I constantly maintain oversight over Doppler maps that we're receiving from different weather medias. If we see anything on the horizon of a massive snow event or ice and freezing conditions, we actually get up at about midnight or one A M and start driving the routes that our drivers are going to be on that day to see if the road conditions will allow for our commercial vehicles to safely travel them. If in those vehicles, I'll tell you, I drive a Chevy Silverado and I keep it in two-wheel drive. If I feel my truck starting to slip in two-wheel drive, or if I'm going up or down these hills and fishtailing, or if I'm not able to come to a complete stop readily, we don't want to put our drivers and any members of the community at risk. So that's when we make the call to either delay the start to our routes, or if we're not expecting any thaw to occur, we will cancel for that day. Han will speak to what it's like as far as communicating that out to our customers, but as soon as we make the decision that it is not safe to service any of our customers, we instantly get ahold of our partners back with WM and start a triage of messaging and communications. That way, everybody is in the know of what they can expect that day and when the next day they will be serviced is. So with that, I will turn it over back to Han so she can discuss how people can connect with WM.
Thanks, Stephen. So here on the screen is the different ways that WM has invested in, in customer communications, being able to reach us twenty-four seven. So I'd like you to follow along with me if you can to go counterclockwise. So first off, we have this website. It's dedicated to North King County, which is what Woodinville falls under. And I don't have it circled in my fancy red circle, but down in the bottom right corner, that's the work of the RSA. It's this Cartwise app where you can kind of plug in anything that, you know, you may have a question about where to recycle it. It's a great tool on that website. So, so we've got the website where you can find out your collection days, ways to contact us. We've got our recycling guide, organics guides, all there. And then in the upper right-hand corner, too, can kind of see that, is a Google Translate tool where if your English is not your first language, you can turn the website to whatever language you'd like. Of course, the PDFs don't turn, but everything else, information-wise, there's a bunch of languages in there, so to be inclusive. So from there, we've got our app. You can scan that QR code to download the app, stay up to date on service information, service descriptions, make a payment. Of course, you've got phone and email, and then we also have live chat Monday through Friday, and that's from seven to seven. So you are with a virtual agent there. We also have, to the right of there, the automated virtual chat, which is more for generic questions. It's more of a bot. And then the two items that I've circled there is, I'd like to talk a little bit more about, is our priority request form, and then that service alerts that Stephen had alluded to. Yep, so next one. So on the right side, there is your priority request form, which I helped develop and hope, you know, you guys, if you get any callers from constituents, definitely you can go on there, you know, and report a problem. If you've got like a missing wheel, broken wheel, missed pickup, if you'd like to change your service levels even, you know, from a sixty-four gallon to a thirty-four. And you can't see it on this slide, but down below, we also have that Google Translate. So also, if English is not your first language, you can change it to whatever language suits you. So the main reason we're here, and even though Stephen didn't mention this, is we also have service interruptions sometimes for heat-related stuff. So not just snow, here we are with heat. And so, like he says, him and his route managers will drive the routes to ensure that it's safe for our drivers to be out in the road. We make a call before six whether or not we're going to cancel service for that day or not. And once that's decided, then we act, we update the website with the service alert. So Woodinville residents would go to here to see if, you know, they put their can out or not. So also, start on there is frequently asked questions and instructions for setting out extras. So those are both PDFs that I know sometimes, especially in smaller cities, people like to contact council members or their mayor if their services are interrupted. Those are great resources for you to provide to customers as to, you know, what they can expect with setting out extras and frequently asked questions. So I did realize, though, that when I do the notification for cancellation, I do send it to the county, and I'm more than happy to add Woodinville staff, whether it's your P I O or your Public Works Director, so that you guys will also know, too, in case the county doesn't, you know, pass that along. Because I did realize, you know, I'm like, wait, they don't, I don't send it to Woodinville directly. So let me know who you'd like to add, and I'll be more than happy to do it. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rianne real quick to talk about outreach.
Thank you, Han, and thank you all, council, mayor, deputy mayor, for having us today. So my name is Rianne Janovich. I'm going to speak about education and outreach work that we've performed in Woodinville. And on the screen, you will see a couple of pictures for some very iconic Woodinville celebrations that we have been able to attend. In two thousand and twenty-three and in two thousand and twenty-four, WM showcased its support in Woodinville by staffing an educational pop-up booth at the Celebrate Wooden Festival. The picture on the right, always a fantastic time. And in two thousand and twenty-four, WM staffed three separate Chateau St. Michelle summer concerts on the left. And these events are staffed by our WM Recycle Corps internship outreach team. They are a wonderful group of college or recently graduated college students. They're, this Recycle Corps internship is a part of WM's innovative education and outreach team. And at each event, we train our interns to disperse recycling, compost and garbage guides to Woodinville residents. We answer any questions that community has, and we use waste sorting games and prizes to educate the community and youth specifically, and their families. It's always great to get the, the families involved. The WM Recycle Corps internship supports professional development and encourages these college students and recent grads to pursue careers in sustainability and waste reduction. Some are actually hired on to our professional outreach team when they're seeking jobs, and that's always an awesome opportunity. So when we educate the community, I would like to talk about some of the strategies we employ as well. We use a lot of that RSA work that Han mentioned, and in that, we've developed a couple of methods that we find really reach the community in various ways. So one of those are transcreation and community-based social marketing. So we use transcreation because it goes a step above translation. We translate our recycling, compost and garbage guides into commonly spoken languages, about eight commonly spoken languages in Washington. But we also transcreate them to include photos of culturally relevant items that are associated with the, the guide specifically. So for our Korean guide, for example, instead of using a sour cream tub to indicate this plastic is recyclable, we'll use a commonly used plastic tub that Korean cultures often will cook with. So it translates and transcreates a little better for folks who don't speak English as a first language. And we utilize community-based social marketing, also called CBSM, in our education work, which involves targeted, scientifically proven methods to incentivize people to try to adopt better recycling or waste reduction behaviors. And with, when we do our WM outreach and we work with our customers, we're using CBSM to address issues in a way that is sustainable, you know, a lowest common denominator, trying to remove barriers to solve recycling issues that they may be facing in their business or in their multifamily complex or in their homes. WM will continue the community engagement momentum into two thousand and twenty-five with outreach strategies that will proactively promote waste reduction in Woodinville. And speaking of waste reduction in Woodinville, I really love talking about the Cascade Recycling Center that we've alluded to. So on this slide, we're highlighting some information about your local Cascade Recycling Facility. We are processing Woodinville's recyclables along with various cities in King County, Snohomish County and other counties at times as well. And the Cascade Recycling Center is an essential piece of the puzzle when it comes to processing recycling efficiently here. And it is a sorting facility, so it only sorts the materials, and then we ship them in bales to manufacturers to actually make those items into something new. And this is something I love about living in, well, like near Woodinville. I live by the Woodinville High School, so I'm literally across the street in Bothell. But I shop here. I live here, basically. I tell everyone I do. And I am proud of it because of all of, you know, the sustainable industries that you have here. It's becoming a really, you know, kind of like a, a center of sustainability with your bright water treatment facility, which is a great operation. You also have like Twenty-One Acres Center for Sustainable Living and the farm market, in addition to one of the country's most advanced recycling facilities. So in two thousand and twenty-three, the Cascade Recycling Center received major upgrades to equip it with state-of-the-art recycling technology. So that just means we're processing material much more quickly and efficiently, and we are able to give larger ranges of grades of materials. So we have more markets that influence recycling on a global and local scale. And some of the technology are the optical sorters, which analyze material on conveyor belts, and they use air jets to sort six hundred pieces of materials per minute. It's so cool to see. We really would love to have the council, to have the mayor, the mayor, the deputy mayor, all of you to come take a tour if you haven't already seen the Cascade Recycling Center. It is just a fascinating facility, and we also invite the community at large to join our public tours. If the council would like to set up a special tour just for you all, we'd be happy to work something out. Just email Han and we can get that going. But the community at large, we invite you to see this facility that can process up to three times the weight of the Statue of Liberty in recycled materials whenever we have our tours. Yeah, you can visit WMNorthwest.com. Yeah, you can visit WMNorthwest.com to see our tour schedule. We also have virtual and in-person tours. So WM supports public outreach and education year-round through these kinds of in-person events, our free recycling facility tours, and all of the communications to customers to highlight what's recyclable and how to, um, deal with things that are not. Uh, last couple of things I'll say is just more about WM and recycling. So WM is the largest recycler in North America and in the Pacific Northwest. We have three recycling facilities in the, the region. We have the one in Woodinville, which is the best. Um, we also have two other recycling facilities, which are also great, but this one is my favorite. Um, those other facilities are in Tacoma and Spokane. So with three WM-owned and operated facilities here in this region and a hundred and two through the country, we have well-established relationships with markets and recycling partners. So for example, as a coun- as a company, we don't send plastics out of North America. They're all processed in this continent. Um, meet lots of times with Canada, lots of times, um, you know, in the northern part of the hemisphere, but not out of North America for plastics. And for glass, glass is still being recycled with WM, even though you may have heard some things, um, because we have a very strong contract with SMI, the glass recycler in Seattle, and they're honoring our contract and recycling our glass. Um, so another thing we're proud about, none of our material has ever been turned away from a downstream recycling partner because we have great technology. So you know that your recycled materials are making it to their next life. Um, we are responsible stewards of the material we collect in your community. If it's not recyclable, we ensure it goes into the landfill, and we, um, think that is the best place for things that can't be recycled to be. But we're always looking at new markets with new technology, and we take pride in doing the right thing the right way. It's how we live our commitments and values every day. So thank you for recycling, Woodinville, and we look forward to more great work in two thousand twenty-five. I'll pass it back to Han.
Thanks, Rianne. And so wrapping this up, I just wanted to, um, mention that Washington's Organics Management Law ramps up their requirements for businesses that generate more than four cubic yards of food or yard waste, that they must divert materials. So if you have any businesses that may have any questions, a four-yarder is, I think about my height. So you'd have to generate a lot of food waste. Um, feel free to give us a call. We'd love to do waste audits. We love to help businesses figure out how to implement, um, the Department of Ecology's, um, law there. So find us at Celebrate Woodinville, because we'll be there for a concert this year. And I'd also like to say that we love to do recycling presentations. I did one with another outreach staff person over at the, um, Brittany Park. Last October, it was awesome. We had a roomful of like thirty seniors who were so passionate about recycling. It was super fun. But yeah, so if you know, know any community groups that would like us to come out to have a, you know, do a presentation, we'd love to. So thank you for giving us this time to present. I really appreciate your time. And, um, yeah, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out.
Councilmember Evans has a question.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight and giving us this information. The resources are really helpful. I will say, we've had, uh, we've all probably heard from community members who were pretty frustrated, um, uh, during the snow especially. And at a community listening event a couple of weeks ago, um, I had somebody who said that he missed four weeks straight of garbage pickup. And so I just wanted to know what can people do? Because he's like, I don't even, I didn't even have a place to put it. Like, where do you even put four weeks of garbage? Um, and so I, in those instances, what should people do? And how can they get some service or some relief, um, just to make sure they don't have like rats and stuff going, coming to their house?
Do you want to pick this one, or do you want me to? Okay, sure, yeah. I mean, um, definitely send us the name. I'd like to at least give them a credit for the weeks that were missed. I know during that first week of February, we had to cancel service, um, that first week and some days on the second week. And it was really spotty, right? Because some areas were super clear, but then we had other areas where we almost took out a carport. So we always base our decisions on the safety for the drivers and for the public. And, um, I definitely would like to talk to the customer that you're referring to, because, um, when service is canceled, it should be recollected the following week, unless, of course, you're on that same day that we had to cancel because of conditions. And so, um, yeah, please forward me that information. And I'm really sorry about that.
And I would, I mean, I know I would really value if we could get those emails. PSE is really good about notifying us, and sometimes they notify us multiple times a day. But that way, if any of us get asked in the community or on social media or text, um, we have the latest info. So I know personally, I would really value that.
Yeah, and you know what? I did forget to mention that of the thirty-four, thirty-four hundred or so customers of Woodinville, I think, um, gosh, I had it, and I don't know where I put it on my notes, but you guys have a super high percentage of people who have online accounts. And again, you could, um, create an online account, you know, give us your method, your preferred method of communication, and you should be getting, you know, like if it's texts, a text to say service is canceled, or an email, or a phone. So definitely sign up for an online account so that you can get the information. Did you want to say something?
I was just going to add, if there is an individual that has gone that extended period of time, please, like onset, I encourage them to call in, call our customer experience line. We strive to have nobody go miss any service day, but if they do, no more than one week, because we understand some of the issues that come, can arise from that, especially any health issues, um, or infestation issues. If a ticket is created, my team of managers and my drivers, they receive them, and we go and investigate a lot of the tickets. If there's any reason that someone would have missed four weeks, we could have found ways to get creative if we knew things were going on. It might not be our, you know, thirty-seven thousand pound empty truck that can get in there, but we have other vehicles and other means to collect material if we need to.
Okay, that's great to know. Thank you so much.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
I believe my question was, was answered. Um, but I do want to show appreciation for your, uh, your ability and your efforts to actually reduce, uh, landfill and, uh, bring about more reuse. Um, but my question was mostly around making sure that we had push-based communications, because what I heard mostly from constituents was they didn't know whether you were coming or not. So that, uh, it's actually very, uh, relevatory to know, oh, there's a way to actually do this and make sure that they're getting the right kind of communication. So thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Wes Kemmel.
So I heard from one constituent who said that they were charged overage fees for the weeks after there was missed pickup.
Ah, we actually, I, I am so sorry for that. Have them call in or, you know, on that form, do the other, because when that happens, when we have to cancel service, I personally send an email out to our contract compliance team to say, these are the days that we canceled service, so make sure you exempt not just the following week, but the week after, um, for recycling, let's say, if there's extra. So I do apologize for that, but please, if you can send me there, because I would love to give them a credit, because they were not, they should not have been charged. And I found my notes. So fun fact, of the thirty-four, forty-five customers in Woodinville, eighty-four point one percent have online profiles, fifty-six point seven, um, of the customers are signed up for auto pay, and sixty-one point seven are signed up for paperless. So go Woodinville for going green and not getting paper invoices, but yeah.
So that was one of the questions, too, is that a lot of people have online auto billing, and they don't see the charges until after it's been withdrawn from their account.
Yeah, yeah.
What you're saying, what I hear you're saying is that these are supposed to be automatic allowances that are added to accounts. But if, the, does the public need to call and do something online? Or should they assume that waste management is going to take care of giving credit when there isn't a pickup?
Yeah, I actually did ask her to review all of the Northwest, the Puget Sound area for that February, uh, the first two weeks of February. So if that has not corrected, please, my contact information is there. I'm more than happy to make that right.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, thank you for this great presentation. Uh, this question is not necessarily my question, but one I've heard from multiple Woodinville residents recently, so I just wanted to raise that here. I've heard multiple residents say that they feel like they're paying more while receiving worse service over time. I just wondered if you can comment on any recent changes or if service has been consistent over the last year? I just wanted to raise their concern while you're here.
Yeah, I definitely, um, so basically, the rate structure for Woodinville is based off of the King County U, W UTC rates. And so since, um, other cities have franchise contracts, and so they, I don't know if they give more leeway to, um, negotiating rates. And so the rates basically is set by the UTC, and, um, we just follow that. And I think it should be just, you know, like the CPI, and then if there's any, um, in order to raise rates, I believe we do have to make a case with the UTC, so it's not something that we can just arbitrarily say, okay, every year, we're going to add this and that, so, yeah.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that anyone who wanted that question got that answered, so I appreciate that explanation.
Yeah.
Councilmember Art.
Thank you. Um, I think you've answered a lot of my questions, but I'm also a little bit curious about your recycling services here. Um, when you're saying that, um, you have really strong contracts with the companies that are taking your recycled materials and remaking them into new materials, what percentage roughly of the material that comes in through the Cascade Recycling Center is actually then sent onward and made into new material versus put back to the landfill?
Yes, so I believe our current rate for the Cascade Recycling Center's, um, residue is about eleven to twelve percent, and it fluctuates based on the month, ba- because maybe December you see higher contamination rates due to wish cycling, as we call it, people throwing away the Amaz- Amazon Mailer bubble wrap things that are actually contamination, as we call them, and they would be in the residue stream. So, um, the Cascade Recycling Center, I'm just thinking about all of the cities that also, um, contribute to the waste, or, sorry, the recycling. And if it's hovering about, I, maybe on its highest thirteen percent, then, um, you're looking at a solid eight, above eighty percent of that material is able to go on to its next life. Um, so this is one of the strongest, um, recycling rates. The national average of re- uh, residue is about twenty to twenty-five, so it's a pretty, um, low residue stream compared to the rest of the country. And, um, oh, I forgot what else I wanted to say, but y'all are this community, and, um, I think we might have a way to isolate Woodinville specifically, if that would be interesting to you all. Uh, might take me a couple of days to get those numbers, but I could try to pass them over to you, Han, and get them to you guys.
I think that would be interesting. I'm also curious, um, I know that people get frustrated when there's service disruptions because of weather-related incidents. Um, but I also know that we're getting more and more of these weather patterns in the area. So I'm curious what you guys are doing to help combat that. I assume that you don't want to have service disruptions any more than the residents of Woodinville do. And so what actions are proactively in the pipeline to help streamline that in the face of more heat, more snow, more ice?
Great question. So we are constantly revamping our safety training, um, so that way, when our drivers are out operating in the ad- these adverse conditions, there's a little bit more, uh, tolerance, I guess you could say. Uh, we've been increasing our safety training for chaining up, um, making sure that our drivers are aware how to operate on icy conditions, um, going over what to look for. We have morning launches every morning where we discuss the safety hazards of the day, what the drivers can expect, and how they can remain diligent to stay safe out there. Uh, ultimately, it is difficult with the changing environment. Um, we will do anything and everything we can to pick up the customers, but at the end of the day, the one thing we won't compromise is the safety of our drivers and the community. So that's just, a- as far as what we're doing, it's trying to constantly evolve how we train safely, um, and making sure that we can try to pick everybody up without any kind of variance as much as possible, if that helps answer the question.
Thank you. And just one final question. I know that, uh, one of the things I get asked all the time is, uh, why do we have bi-weekly recycling pickup when our neighbors have weekly recycling pickup? And I know that the answer is, uh, based on our contract with the UTC. Um, but, uh, I'm curious when the next opportunity to change that contract might come along, because I think that our community members would, would be happy to, uh, have more frequent recycling service.
Um, that is a good question, and I don't know the answer yet. So I will research that and get that back to you as to when or whether or not that's negotiable with, um, I guess it'd be the North King County UTC area. So I will make sure I get you an answer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, thank you for the presentation. I, I just have a comment and a, a question. Um, so my comment, uh, first off is that, uh, we're going to find out fairly soon if the new transfer station would be moved from the Houghton location to Woodinville. Um, I, I used, uh, waste management as an example that we're doing our part for solid waste for a small city like Woodinville. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate the work that you're doing. Um, and I think that made an impact, uh, to King County. In fact, I took Councilmember Sarah Perry on a tour past your site and showed her pictures worth a thousand words, in my opinion. So, um, she, she was impressed, and I think that made an impact. Um, my question is, uh, recycling glass. So Woodinville, if you haven't heard, has wine tasting, um, as a prominent feature for Woodinville. Uh, I was speaking to a, uh, former council member in Lake Shalane. They had a, a recycling program for, uh, wine bottles. Um, and we have, I wouldn't have any idea how much it is, but we have a significant number of wine bottles. Uh, do you have anything specific for that or any suggestions that might actually, uh, work with that feature of Woodinville that doesn't probably exist in a lot of different communities? Or is, is that possible, or are you already doing something along those lines?
I, that is a great question, and something I also love about Woodinville is the wine. Um, my thoughts on that as an outreach person are more back-of-house operations, um, opportunities, like just to have bins that are specifically glass and possibilities to work with other glass haulers in the future. As it is right now, glass is kind of going through some changes and some issues with other haulers, um, in Seattle. So, or, let the, sorry, the company itself is, is in Seattle, but, um, there's changes coming, so I wouldn't say to expect anything anytime soon. But, uh, placing glass in your recycling is still the best option. And if back, back-of-house, um, opportunities arise, just have a glass-only bin, that could be helpful. Or just keeping it simple and, and keeping it in the recycling is great.
I appreciate that, and I, I hope in the future you might look into that because, um, you know, some of these wineries are, are going through lots of bottles, uh, lots of time. And, and if the, the service is every two weeks, I suspect that that isn't all making it in recycling. Um, and I'd like to see that actually, particularly in Woodinville, be something that we could do. So if you could, uh, get a chance to look in that in the future, that'd be much appreciated.
Will do.
Thank you. Um, and then my last question might be for the city manager. So the, the contract, I, I too got a lot of questions from constituents. Um, and the contract that we have with waste management, um, has, uh, if I understand it right, is, has a seven-year out if we decided that we were going to move away from that? And, um, creating our own s- solid waste service as a city has some challenges as well. Is that, can you?
Thank you, Mayor. There's a lot of, lot of questions, a lot of points there. I'll keep it short. We, we do not currently, the city of Woodinville does not have a contract with waste manager or any hauler. Uh, absent that, a- as was explained in the presentation, uh, we automa- this area is automatically served by the contract that King County has with, uh, UTC. Um, in order for us to take that on, and it's been a number of years since we looked at this, it's been some years since I've done, looked at this. Um, it was seven, eight years, uh, of notice that we have to give before we can possibly negotiate our own contract and take over that, that contract. So it is a lengthy process to do that. And then, of course, there would need to be significant conversations about what that implies, whether it's working with a service hauler. Speaking from experience, I hope we're not talking about our own utility, but that's a whole different conversation. Uh, but it is a lengthy process at a minimum just to contract ourselves directly with a hauler.
Thank you. Any, any further questions? Uh, thank you very much for the presentation. Really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry, we're on to the public comments. Anybody signed up? Okay, public comment period. When I call your name, state your name, and whether you live in the city limits of Woodinville, or you have a business in the city limits, and you'll have three minutes. We have a virtual comment signed up, and I think it's Jack McCullough.
Yep, I'm right here. Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
We can. You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name's Jack McCullough, I'm here on behalf of some, a couple of property owners in the city of Woodinville. I do not live in Woodinville, I'm their attorney. But it was interesting that, I enjoyed that Waste Management presentation, because actually I'm here to talk about, one of the issues is Waste Management. So you are going to be looking at item number 10, the new critical area ordinance, and it includes some new changes to the city's urban stream designation process. Urban streams are streams, there are some of them in the city that exist in or immediately adjacent to existing urban development. Some of them are, you know, frankly, ditches in some cases. The city has had a really successful program of dealing with these and allowing development to continue while still protecting these stream corridors. Two examples I want to give you, one is Waste Management, the Cascade Recycling Facility. It is a fabulous facility. We've had a permit pending with the city to make it even better, which is to put a shed over the collection area on the facility, which is now open to the elements, and the shed would protect it from rain and would actually improve the water quality from potential runoff. The shed, however, constitutes new development, and the shed is technically within the buffer of a stream that is nearby. So we've been working very successfully, we think, with Robert and his team on finding a solution to that and providing more mitigation. That process is still in the works. It may or may not get done by the time the new ordinance is adopted, and so we're concerned about that, because otherwise we will not be able to protect this collection area from the elements. Similarly, we're working with the Chateau Saint Michelle. We have a, on the winery side, down on the valley side of the property, there is a stream, which is really frankly a ditch that's been there for 50 years. It runs through the kind of grass parking lot area that many of you have seen. Our current plan is to protect it with appropriate buffers, treat it well, treat it as required under current regulations, but if we are not able to get that plan approved by the time that the new ordinance goes into effect, then the buffers could increase substantially, and that would, it would interfere substantially with the potential for redevelopment of that portion of the site. So these are both applications in process, they're in the pipeline now, and one of the things that I wanted to suggest tonight, and this is in the letter that you see in your record, is that the council consider grandfathering existing applications so that people who are in the pipeline, so to speak, can have those permits processed for urban streams in accordance with the existing rules, and not have the rules change kind of midway or toward the very end of the process, because it would substantially interfere with both of these projects, both of which are, I think, really strong projects for the city of Woodinville. So that's my pitch tonight, and happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you. That's your three minutes, Mr. McCullough, I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Allison Farmer?
Allison Farmer, resident outside the city limits, Green Partners' DA. When I first saw the Green Partners' proposal, I was deeply upset and also very mad after my last week's comment. Then there was a sudden relief and delight of all signs pointing towards this council saying no to this DA, and I thank you for not supporting this. But then something did not add up. There's a recorded pattern of developers first presenting pretty image to get approval. Over the years, large developments stop and start, reason being not enough funds, et cetera, with developers seeking continued amendments that change the whole scope of the project and deliver less than they promised. This application is suspect because the developers include the most hideous prison box conceptual image for their initial pitch. I feel it's designed to cause shock and horror. They also made the affordable less than 10 percent, knowing you would not accept this. Last week, the much-needed adoption and affordable policy was pushed even further out. Green Partners have time to play a game. I imagine they have an improved design just waiting in the sidelines expecting you to ask for more. When they produce this revised DA, everyone's gonna be so relieved. The new plan will look good, look like a really good deal, especially compared to this one, and there will be a desperate need to lock in the same affordable they offered in their previous contract, as presently we do not have an mandate to force them to produce any. We are then right back to the pretty picture being sold, just where they want us. The DA will then get immediately passed to the planning commission for their recommendation without community pushback. With the planning commission now newly rendered powerless and time restricted, the plan will come back to you as is. All public comment diffused in paperwork and the transfer, paperwork transfer and silence in prior procedure. I feel what Green Partners really want with this rushed, unreviewed DA is to tie this lengthy contract to our current code of affordable being treated as a public benefit. Over the years, it will give them the power to come back and fill out phases with luxury townhomes. If the contract has to be extended, they can refuse to add any more affordable, claiming they have given enough benefits, and there will be zero any future council can do about it. You've had it happen to you. Inclusionary affordable is in our incomprehensive plan as a tool to build a fairer city over the next 20 years. It was meant to be filed by now. This is too big a project to be rested under our current code that has left us a target for developer abuse. It might take Green Partners years to even start building this DA assigned. I urge this council to stop playing the game and look after our city's future by voting for an immediate moratorium on all housing until our affordable inclusionary policy is adopted. Thank you.
Ahmad Amiri?
May I approach the council member to give him the papers that I'm gonna say?
Sure.
That way there will be no vocabulary misunderstanding.
Thank you.
My name is Ahmad Amiri, and I live within the city of Woodinville. My wife and I have raised seven children here. Part of the reason I have been so persistent in my comments to commissioners and council members is that I believe our children haven't had the same opportunity as we had. Like many, some of our children haven't had chance at homeownership. This issue is not just about housing. Trend shows that fewer young people are having children, and they are waiting longer to do so. This is not good sign for our future. In my view, small-scale developmental infill is a critical component. While some of the city projections shows homeowner development contributing a smaller portion of total housing, I believe this is more about prior regulatory impediment rather than actual potential for development. It is essential that city ease regulatory burdens and provide incentive for homeowners to add housing. Regarding private street, I have reviewed ordinance 782, and I am concerned that if this is the solution to the city private street problem, it doesn't go far, far enough, actually. As noted in the staff report, a transportation infrastructure deviation component was added to the ordinance. Additionally, the city is adopting certain sections of international fire code, which could serve as the mechanism to allow more development on private road. This approach mirrors the one proposed by Department of Commerce, but the ordinance in the current form introduces more restrictions, such as 20-foot minimum road instead of 12-foot required by Department of Commerce and additional provisions already covered by the city TIS. Most importantly, in a set of more permissive approach, the city seems to propose two-step conditional process. First, director must decide whether to allow the international fire code a standard, and then the fire commissioner may decide to increase certain provision like a road width or access requirement. I will finish rest of it at the next comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Lau?
Hi, I'm Barbara Lau. I work in Woodinville, and I've lived in the valley since 1991. My comments are regarding the Green Partners. First off, I want to remind you of your housing goals and your code. It's goal H4 is to foster livable neighborhoods with a desirable quality of life, environmental sustainability, and healthy active living. Policy H18 is to ensure that new development and redevelopment are compatible with existing and planned neighborhood character, such as those through design and landscape standards. You also have environmental goals, I'm not gonna say them all, but, and you're also want to promote architecture that emphasizes traditional three-dimensional forms, northwest finishes, and has an emphasis on human-scale design. The Green Partners' proposal to redevelop the 19.2 acres of downtown by constructing a mixed-use development consisting up to 1,300 dwelling units, 200 hotel rooms, and 1,758 parking spaces and 3.2 acres of open space does not meet this, these requirements. Their request to re-increase residential housing on additional streets will not benefit the goals of Woodinville to become a walkable and livable city. The structures are large block structures, much like she described earlier, and do not meet any of those human, livable city, walkable city goals. Instead of these closed blocks, how about some U-shaped structures with community gardens and open spaces on the ground floor? Perhaps a space mirroring the De Young Park on the south side of 175th. In addition to, how about a second neighborhood mini park like they have over near Rusty Pelican where people can sit? The closed, open spaces in the block structures do not promote community, they are closed off to the residents. This kind of design is not what Woodinville needs, and also it doesn't include, of course, your affordable housing. Please do not get burned twice by Green Partners. Thank you.
Holly Munchow?
Holly Munchow, and I am a Woodinville city resident. I want to thank you for inviting Waste Management, I learned some things. I do want to encourage you, though, to take a moment to consider what a contract might look like if we had the same services Bothell. I think it's worth that investigation. When I did the back-of-the-napkin, not particularly accurate calculation, my service fees would actually be $20 less a month if I lived in Bothell, and that includes the weekly pickup and all that. And the other thing that the Bothell also benefits from is drop-off options for additional recycling, like you heard how they can't take Amazon bubble packets. Well, in Bothell, you can't, they don't do that in pickup either, but they do have locations you can drop them off at to be recycled for free that aren't available to our residents. So I think it's worth investigating, especially when the rates, when Waste Management proposes rate increases again in another five years. And then also just echoing what the other, as long as I'm here, said, you know, obviously I care deeply about affordable housing, so that's really important. Take your time, get this contract right, don't feel rushed. I mean, I know it's really annoying to have a gravel lot in the middle of downtown, but this is, whatever you decide to build here is the thing that's gonna be here for 20, 30 years, not something that you want to rush into just so we can get it, start building six months sooner. And thank you all for your service.
Thank you.
Oh, I move to approve the consent calendars.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to our first business item.
Before we do that, I have a point of order. I reckon, I remember that we all got an email earlier today about an executive session that needed to be at the end of the meeting tonight. I want to make sure we let everybody know here that we wanted to add it to the agenda and we just forgot, so I move that we add executive session to the end of the meeting.
Good catch, yeah, we...
Seconded.
Yep, a motion, a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We'll add business item number 12, executive session, to the agenda. Okay, business item number eight, Green Partners LLC's application to amend figure 21.42.040, map designating active and residential uses at the street level. Mr. Grumbach?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, just let my PowerPoint come up here. All right, as mentioned, this is a session regarding applications for a code amendment and development agreement. Just a quick introduction, before we heard a little bit of this, and you'll probably hear a little bit more about this, but Green Partners is proposing a new project called Midtown, which is to redevelop about 19.2 acres of property that they own with new housing, commercial space, senior housing, and a hotel. As part of this, Green Partners submitted applications for a code amendment and an application for a development agreement. And the purpose tonight is not necessarily to decide on any of this, what we're mostly looking for is just, one of the reasons we included the development agreement in the packet, was just to kind of seek some preliminary input from the council on that application. And then the other thing that we are asking you about potentially taking in action is the code amendment, which would need to be put on the planning commission's work plan in order for it to be considered. So the way they outline is, I'm not gonna go over the whole, you're not gonna have to listen to me for this whole entire presentation, I don't know if you are probably going, thank you. Jason Henderson from Green Partners is going to talk about the project and the development agreement a little bit, or at least mostly about the project and stuff, and then once kind of complete that part of the conversation, we'll come back, and then I'll talk about the code amendment application and the planning commission's work plan. So Jason, you wanna come on up? Any questions before we get started, Jason gets started?
No, thank you. Thank you for coming, Jason. Is the mic on, or can you?
Hello?
There you go.
Great. So like Robert said, my name's Jason Henderson, here to represent Green Partners on this project, we're calling Midtown Woodinville. You know, this is obviously a revised project, you know, but we just submitted our DA, and so we thought it'd be appropriate to give, you know, a status update on what's going on with the site. Our main goal is to follow in the footsteps, I think, of, you know, some really great recent projects you've seen in downtown Woodinville, and I thought, you know, it'd be appropriate to kind of, you know, set the table. We're not in a rush either, we realize this is gonna be a back-and-forth process, and we wanted, you know, a lot of public input and council's input on making it right. We, you know, we know we need to rebuild some trust here, so that much is clear. If you could go to the next slide. So, you know, I thought it'd be time to give kind of a status update. We were partners with Mulback's for 15 years. We got to know Jens, you know, folks that worked at Mulback's. We basically did a sale leaseback as the initial transaction. We added land over time, some of that was utilized for Mulback's operations, some of it for eventual redevelopment. We worked with them on operations, capital expenditures, very closely for many years. About five years ago, we started work on a project called the Gardens District, as you know. We worked very closely for about four years as partners, everything from picking Everything from picking the design team, planning, permitting, you name it. And so when we got to 2023, that's when things got really hard, to be frank. Construction costs had gone up about 30%. Interest rates more than doubled. We were staring down a project that we wouldn't be able to feasibly execute, and so we decided to pause. During that time, we offered, you know, many more years on the lease. It was obvious we weren't going to be able to redevelop the site for quite some time. And so, you know, whether it be free rent or any sort of concessions, we made that offer, it wasn't enough. And it's too bad it wasn't, but that's the reality. You know, I think closing any business is an incredibly gut-wrenching decision, but it's the decision that they had to make, and it's really, it's tragic because I know them too, and we obviously had a falling out. What I'd like to do, though, is move on and pick up the pieces and do a really great project that Woodinville can be proud of. And so here today, you know, we're back to the drawing board. You know, I think we've got some, one thing I do want to mention, the existing buildings, obviously, were demolished. We spent six or seven months knowing that Mulback's was closing, trying to find some interim uses. I think I talked to about a dozen different garden centers. It just wasn't feasible to backfill the space. It was too out of date. Everything needed to be, needed to be brought back up to code, and the interest just wasn't there. We had a ton of break-ins, theft. There were no fire systems to speak of. It just, it was a hazard. And so that led us to the demo decision that you see today. So it's a, you know, it's a vacant 19-acre site that's fenced, a status that we'd like to change. So in requesting consideration for a revised project, you know, I think the big picture is largely the same. If we extend the downtown grid in a, in a, in a natural way, running 138th, 173rd to 139th, and then a couple streets to break up the blocks, it yields about four new streets and about five to seven new blocks, there's a ton of space. You could fit a lot of program on the site, whether it be housing, retail, hotel, activities, all sorts of things. And so, you know, I think our focus in general in looking at the site and long-term planning in Woodinville is to make it more commercially intensive toward the north end of the site, and as you go south, you know, make it more residential, a little bit less active on the street. And so we're kind of bringing that, that, that plan to mind and the, and the planning that you see. I do want to kind of point out, I think there's been a misunderstanding a bit too with the materials you see in the staff report, this, it's just a feasibility study, it's not design. So the blocky buildings you see, it's, it's a, it's a what can fit analysis, it's not an actual design. So we don't want to do like a prison ziggurat either as part of our design. It's not very flattering. If we could go to the next slide. I mean, I think the main point I want to make today is that we're a willing partner in an open dialogue. We want to do what's right. We want to build a project that's consistent, that allows downtown to grow and is consistent with the downtown vision. And I think there are some really great things we can do as far as public benefits and community benefits, whether that be open space, infrastructure, affordable housing, enhancements to 175th, sustainable development practices. We're all in on all of those goals. And so, you know, as far as, as far as next steps, you know, I think the focus that we'd like to bring is aligning the development goals with the city's goals as best we can and memorializing that in a revised development agreement and going through that process, you know, publicly. And then secondarily, as Robert pointed out, you know, the, the, the item on today's agenda is the ground floor ordinance. The, the map of the ground floor ordinance doesn't include all of the project area, so the, the request is to basically update what those ground floor uses are required to be consistent with the, with the revised project. So that's all I kind of came prepared to say, but happy to answer any questions.
I guess I can kick this off. I just wanted to, yeah, reiterate that the abrupt closure of Mulback's was a disappointment to Woodinville and many, myself included, and many residents in Woodinville, so we're sorry that that fell through. You had what I considered a pretty amazing project at that time. So this, this project is important as all projects are, but this project is important to Woodinville. It's, it's on 175th, which we consider our, kind of our main street, and you have several blocks on 175th. We need to get to the point where something that works for the city and works for you, we need, this is an important project that we would be, would, would be in Woodinville 50, 100 years or whatever, whatever the time print, and this could be a showpiece in Midtown Woodinville, so I'd like to see it be something unique. I don't, I don't, I hope we can avoid some of the run-of-the-mill cookie cutter things that we've seen in other places. I'm looking, personally, I wrote, I jotted down some things that we're looking for, or I'm looking for. 10% affordable housing, I think at a minimum is what we're looking for using M F T E process. It cannot be, whatever we get to, in my opinion, cannot be a long series of unbroken buildings along 175th where you're creating that concrete canyon, you're just looking up sheer walls. So having said that, we need some significant setbacks. Maybe it has planning strips and then a sidewalk, and then maybe a stair-step approach with the retail and above. Open spaces, you mentioned that earlier, and whatever we arrive to, I think it was mentioned by one of the speakers, I like the U-shaped concept that, that can be utilized in certain areas and have some significant open or public spaces for us. And it was mentioned kind of briefly, it needs to conform to our design standards for northwest woodland character. I know that's a really subject, I haven't been able to figure out exactly what that means, and I've been here a while, but it's one of those things that you kind of know it when you see it. We're looking for above design standards on our, particularly on our main thoroughfare gold lead standard, I think should be at a minimum. I know that some of the requirements are already approaching gold lead, but I think that should be a minimum. I also would advocate to council that we ask for the infrastructure to be put in place first, which the roads that you're speaking of and any other issues. I know at one time there was a, a bridge issue and a roundabout and, and whatever's entailed that. I'd like to see, having done this a while, what I, what I personally don't like seeing is when, and when a project does away with the existing structures and then sits for a while, and then we lost the benefits to the city for services to our community, and we lost the tax benefits and all that, and now we have a big, open vacant lot. 175th landscaping, it should be above average, and I think I mentioned the planning strips and a wider sidewalk. And then I, I don't know what would be required to this, and I know the benefits of, of having the retail on a busy street, and I applaud those, and I think that's, that's good, but I think some of this, the retail doesn't need to be pushed right up to, right up to the sidewalk and, or the street in some instances, so I'd like to see setbacks on that. And then I had thoughts like, Wooden Creek, I gave you pictures late, are you able to pull those up? So I, I, I got a couple of pictures, there's a couple of things that I liked that they've done at Wooden Creek and also in Kirkland. This is a picture of Wooden Creek where they have, the corners are kind of rounded off or, or at 90, 40, 45 degree angles, and that creates an open courtyard feeling, so I'd like to see consideration for it, the corners having some of that rounded off. And then there's another one I think I had was from Kirkland. We have that, there's another example of, of you have retail in the back there and you kind of have the corner kind of cut off there, and you have walking spaces and, and nice landscaping in between. So those, those are just some of my suggestions, mine personally. Like to open it up to the rest of council to see what they have to say. Councilmember Evans?
Thank you. Yeah, I think we have to be really careful when we put out drawings because I know as soon as that hit, my phone and my social media was blowing up. So I just want to be really careful because the Gardens District, the whole community was excited about that. It was beautiful, it seemed to really fit with, you know, the history of that area, but also how we connect into the valley and all of the agricultural stuff that goes around here. So it would, I know personally, I'm going to want to see a lot more open space. How it is right now, I, I, I was like, oh my gosh, this, I was in Romania in August, it reminded me of some of the blocks in Romania, I was like, we can't have that. And I don't want a concrete jungle there either, it's too important to the city. I also wanted to check in with you and see, I know when you first were applying for the development agreement last time, it was a little bit too late in the process, but have you checked into the connecting housing to infrastructure program that will either provide grants or offset, it'll provide grants or deferred loans to fund utility connections, the water, the sewer, the stormwater for affordable projects? The project, though, has to have up to 25%. So between the M F T E and this, it could really offset some of those costs that could go in there, and so I just wanted to make sure that we were looking at that and really trying to find the, the grants and the money out there to really bring some affordable units here, especially because it's right in our downtown where we have so many businesses that really need people who can work there, who can live close. So I don't know, have you had a chance to look into that?
I have not, Councilmember Evans, but we will look into it.
Yeah, I know it was too late in 2023 for that one, but I would really love it if we could because 25% up to 80% AMI, and there's some different things in there, but it could really offset a lot of those costs that make affordable housing challenging. Thank you.
Councilmember Arn?
Thank you. I think my fellow councilmembers have expressed some ideas that are pretty general on the council in terms of what the aesthetics of this project we would love to see here in the city. It's always really difficult when you start someone off with one idea and then you have to reset expectations in the middle, and I appreciate that, but I also wouldn't be doing my due diligence for the residents of Woodinville if I didn't say it. We, we expect something equally lovely at the end of this. For me, when I was looking through the packet and the material, one of the issues that was flagged in my mind, having been through a few development agreements that haven't always worked out the way we wanted them to at this point, is just the timing on some of this. A lot of the language in this development agreement is kind of loose on when certain benefits would happen for the city, and I think it is really important for our community that we are getting things like the infrastructure squared away, right away. The sooner we can get the grid roads put in, the sooner residents can start using them, and it will be beneficial to the city, and also things like affordable housing. We, as a council, have expressed our desire to have more affordable housing in the city, so having that as part of an early phase of construction instead of just at some point in this very long project would be beneficial to our community if that can be at least clearly stated when that would take place. I think those were just some of the thoughts I had as I was reading through this. I do think that there is a little bit of work to be done to woo the residents of Woodinville with what this new project can be and the benefits to our community. I personally believe that as we are changing the way that residents move around downtown by adding these blocks and grid streets, we need to be increasing the active use across the city and not just on 175th or adjacent to it, but that I think people, once they're living there and they're moving around and they're walking around, I think that we, we don't want long stretches of purely residential right in our downtown corridor. So I will just say that for my own, for my own viewpoint. Thank you.
Councilmember Evans?
So looking through the packet, it looks like you submitted this application on March 10th, which was last Monday, and it made it onto our agenda for our meeting today. A lot of the development agreement has not been reviewed. It's very different from what you've presented to us before. So you've come to us before with a lot more flushed out, a lot more interesting things to talk about, a lot more concrete ideas. This is not what I've expected from Green Partners in the past, so I'm left wondering why. Why is this such a departure from what you normally present us with? What's the rush? I mean, you've had a development agreement for two years from us, which functionally you probably couldn't meet the requirements of because of Mulback's, but again, aren't construction costs higher now than they were in 2023? And it's a far worse economic climate now than in 2023. So pardon me for being a skeptic, but I just don't think that anyone is going to be building right now, particularly with lumber costs and with tariffs on steel. Why are, why the rush right now? Why are you coming forward with a project that isn't up to the standards that we've seen from you before? It feels, it sits uneasy with me. It makes me wonder, why are we getting such a good deal? Why aren't we taking a little bit more time? I would have at least liked to have staff come to us with some information about the development agreement ahead of time, but for me right now, this, this is very different, this is very rudimentary, this is, this is just, yes, we could build these blocks, and you've come to us for years with pictures, even four years before the development agreement, you've come to us with pictures. And this is so hypothetical right now that it's almost like you're begging us to say no, so that you get it out of the way, get the first no out of the way, so that when you come back, we're more grateful. And I think that you should know us better than that, we've gone through these negotiations before, let's have an honest negotiation from the get-go. Right now, I don't see this as something we have to rush, particularly with middle housing that we have to get through, we have a lot of comp plan things that need to go through Planning Commission. At the very least, I'd like to tap the brakes until after June, when we have to get things through for comp plan amendments. What I'm seeing here is very light on what people are hoping for, and the councilmember Arn's point, yeah, people are very unhappy with Green Partners, and I'm sure you understand why, and it's nothing personal, but it is still something that we have to address. So I think there needs to be a significant increase in the amount of information that you're showing us and what you're actually willing to do, and I think first and foremost is affordability isn't a maybe, it's a hopefully this council will pass some sort of affordability mandate, and you'll have to come up with a different public benefit. But the way this sits right now, this just, this is just, it's just not, it's not what you've shown us before, and I always wonder why that is. So presumably, regardless of what we say tonight, you'll want to cancel the development agreement that we've had for two years. I assume that functionally it's not happening, but I know in the staff report, there is an option for you to cancel it. I think at the very least, that would be a good faith move on your part to show council, yes, you're interested in moving forward, and yes, you understand that that development agreement, even though there's a lot of work in it, it just functionally can't happen anymore because of Mulback's.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yeah. I concur with many of the statements for affordability. The one area that I would like to see is some creativity for owner equity. If, if there's any way to create owner units for sale, I think that would be big. I think we heard, there's also demand for people that want to control their, they want to own and build equity, and we have a lot of renting, a lot of rental units in the area. It would be nice if we had something that was, that can be picked up by young families or young people to own, and maybe parts of the units where you have a lot of retail, you know, maybe tie, tie that in with some ownership options.
Councilmember Evans?
Thank you. Yeah, for me also, the infrastructure, getting that done early is of the paramount importance of a project like this, as well as getting affordable housing in at a very early stage. But I also want to highlight some of the things that Mayor Millman brought up earlier that I think are important. One thing that makes the last project people got excited about was it was so different. It was something that really was a cornerstone of our downtown area, could have been a cornerstone of our downtown area, and got people excited as a part. It got people excited as a part of our community to bring people into the downtown area and want to come there as a destination. So I think it really comes down to creative design and open space while also using creative ingenuity to make that different than all the cookie cutter things that we have seen. And in this design phase, be able to make sure it's something that really will be something that stands out. And people are proud to say, this is in our city, come see our city. And this is a unique aspect that you can see here in Woodenville and can be the cornerstone to that, uh, area down there.
So, uh, you know, this is, the, the, this is a preliminary start, and so we're giving you individual feedback on, on what we as, as a council, or at least individually as a council, want to see. I think some of the things you can hear are pretty universally, uh, desired from council. Um, what I would like to see happen is that you incorporate, uh, some of these ideas and then come back to council with an updated plan that we could, uh, incorporate, uh, some of these ideas, uh, and, 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 uh, we could, uh, start from that point. I, I wouldn't want to see it at this point not fleshed out, sent to, uh, planning that's not baked yet. So I would hope that, uh, council agrees and that we allow you some time to incorporate some of these thoughts and then come back to us at the appropriate time, uh, hopefully incorporating, uh, these. So that's one. Um, I can tell you that some of the things that, that I am excited about the project is, uh, we have an opportunity to get 4.1, I think, a million in park impact fees. I think that's pretty significant, especially the things that we are planning. Um, we have the opportunity to get affordable housing in our downtown. Um, that's also very exciting. Um, we have an opportunity to make this a showpiece. We have an opportunity to, uh, add to our mandatory affordable housing targets. Um, we have an opportunity to make downtown even more walkable and vibrant. Um, a couple of things that I, you probably know, but are, are pretty universally, uh, fairly universally, uh, desired that when I hear, talk to people around Woodenville. Um, and, and councilmember Taylor touched on one of it, the ownership opportunities is important. And, uh, I don't know if you've been following the legislature, but it looks like they're going to ease up on the condo liability laws, um, which, uh, hopefully works for developers when we can partner with the city and provide ownership opportunities. And, uh, regardless, I hope, uh, that we can do some, if not, we can do some townhomes where people can, uh, I, I don't know if I would say entry level or entry level or to downsize or, you know, or people to just want to live in the downtown area but want to own. So I hope that, uh, remains an opportunity. Uh, with that, uh, I'd like to ask the city manager, um, so just, just for my knowledge, I don't, you know, we, we talked about height all over the place, uh, several times. What, and, and, um, just to put it in perspective, what, how many floors is allowed by code for this project currently? It, and in consideration, if you add, I don't know, what, 20-foot ceilings on the retail side and that, that type of thing?
So the code doesn't have a floor basis. It's just a height.
Right.
And so how many floors that can work in the project. And so the base height in the CBD zone is 39 feet. Um, and then through, um, incentives outlined in the code, you can get up to the 57 feet. And then there's also potentially an ability to go up to 75 feet in the east frame part of the project. It's not all this is in east frame. Um, in the east frame part, we can go up to 75 potentially through a development agreement. The 57-foot height doesn't require a development agreement, uh, but anything above that would require a development agreement.
Okay. So for our discussions, um, there are certain heights that they could build to without a development agreement, without the need to negotiate. There's, there's a base level that could be built, um, in the project without, uh, without a whole lot of discussions and a development agreement. Is that, that correct?
Right. We have some as rights that built in, both in height, in, uh, residential floor, um, area ratio, which is kind of talking about bulk, um, and, uh, some of the other, and a bunch of other provisions as well.
Okay. Appreciate that. I just want, uh, the public to understand that there are the ability to build, um, you know, without a whole lot of council input on that. So, uh, I just want to highlight that. Councilmember Evans.
Great. Thank you. Um, I want to circle back to enrolling the community in this. So when I think about change management, there's some really specific things that are going to need, that we need to make sure that we're doing. I think public, um, engagement. So we have, uh, quarterly community listening sessions. I think we should probably have, you know, you should probably host a few where you're having people come in and talk about the project, talk about kind of where you are, allow them to at least have a voice. Cause I think that's what upset people the most is that they felt like, oh my gosh, this thing's going to get just pushed on us and we don't have a voice. I also think that it's really important that we, um, that we help people understand, you know, this is why it's changing. Because we can't use the development agreement that was originally proposed because MOLBAX has decided to close. So it's not that you're throwing all that work away. That specific agreement can't be built. But I think it'd be really good for people to have a chance to tell you what they loved about that, or, you know, what questions they had, or just kind of what they'd like to see. I know the mayor had some pictures today, and I know that, that area that had the, um, rabbit statue, I mean, that is such a draw. There's people, there's thousands of people on the weekend that just go through there. They're taking photos, they're doing all sorts of stuff. It becomes, um, a gathering place and, you know, people, I don't know if you've ever gone to Rusty Pelican on the weekend, but there's like two hour waits. People are playing around in that yard. It has become a community's place. And I, I know that's really what a lot of us are looking for in this area, is to make sure that we're not just jamming in businesses and, and residential, but that we're leaving space to live. So again, I just ask that we bring the community along with us and that we give them a chance to have a voice.
Any other questions, input from anyone? Uh, Robert?
All right. Um, sorry about that. All right. These last couple of slides are just about the code amendment application.
Thank you, Jason. Sorry.
Or about the code amendment application piece of it. As mentioned, they had, uh, submitted an application to request a change to this map. Um, many of you may recall, we've had conversations about this in the past, that in the CBD zone, we have this prohibition on ground floor, uh, dwelling units, um, facing public streets. They can be on the ground floor, but they just can't be along public streets. They have to be actually further back than that. Um, there is an exception. The exception is, um, this map, um, and when a development agreement is approved. So what they're asking for is basically being able just to expand it primarily along, um, parts of 173rd, 171st, uh, and the new 138th if that gets built, as well as part of a potentially new 139. So it's a fairly, from a technical standpoint, it's a ver- fairly simple, straightforward code amendment. Um, and so if council's ready for that, it basically, it's something that could be added. Um, shouldn't take up a lot of planning commission time. Um, obviously though, if there's a desire to kind of wait on this, that works fine as well. Um, but, um, happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Any questions on that for Robert? Um, I would, I would, uh, yeah, I, th- this is, uh, I want to look at this project as a holistic project, not just piecemeal. So I would advocate that we, uh, don't, uh, we don't move that to planning commission's work plan. We have, uh, uh, the, the property owner come back, uh, with an overall plan that we can look at before we send it to planning, because this is part of, this is part of, uh, uh, this is part of, uh, the cooperation between the city and the developer that this is something they want and we have things that we want. So I think we should hold that in reserve, uh, to look at this plan more holistically instead of just doing it a piece at a time. And so this is something that, um, we should look at when we have a, a more, more thought out, uh, project, in my opinion. Councilmember Evans.
I agree with that. And one of my big questions on this is going to be how much retail space is there going to be in the overall project? And, uh, compared to how much we thought we were going to have, because that's going to go straight to how much, um, sales tax we'll be able to get from the project and how, what piece of this are we giving up? So those are some big questions that I have. I wouldn't be ready to support this yet. I, I want to see the full plan.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
Yeah. In terms of going to planning commission, um, because the development agreement hasn't been flushed out at all, we haven't, I mean, it hasn't been reviewed by staff. I think it's premature to take that portion to planning commission. I think if we want to just deal with this code amendment, then we should look at it just from the fact of this is a code amendment. And these are things that you could do if we amend the code, but I don't want it to be presented with the development agreement because that seems something larger. And I think when we have a code amendment, we need to consider it independent of which developer would like to build it. So this is a code amendment that affects anyone who would build. Green Partners is not necessarily going to build here. This is just an option if they do. So when this is, if this is going to be considered by planning commission, one, it definitely shouldn't come before any of our middle housing or inclusive housing at all. Um, and if it does come to this discussion, it should just be a discussion of the code. We can't say there's a potential development agreement coming because I think that muddies the waters. We have to look at code in terms of whoever builds it, and it doesn't matter who. We have to be agnostic of that. So if the consideration is just first floor residential in these areas, that should be the presentation. And there can be discussions about what that could mean, what that could look like. But if you add, I think, the dimension of development agreement, there is a pressure to approve that I think does the, the community a disservice and sort of pushes the inertia that it's an automatic approval versus an actual discussion. So later, uh, after we finish middle housing, obviously it's, a lot of it's going to have to be done before June because of the comp plan. Um, but after that, it can just be talking about the code amendment, period. Let's not conflate that one means the other. This is a standalone. We should discuss the standalone. And then when Green Partners has a better idea of what they want to do, then that can be presented to us and it can be presented to planning commission.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Um, I would almost agree with that, but I believe that whatever we decide in terms of the code would directly affect the design of what gets put forth, because the considerations here will probably go directly, can we put residential on the ground floor or can we not? And that will also determine as, uh, councilmember Evans was bringing up, what's our retail footprint and spacing actually look like? So I imagine a, a lot of this, uh, block design that we have now will not be what's in place once we say, okay, we're going to change what can be allowed on that, that ground floor. So I do think that they are tightly coupled, especially given the amount of space that Green Partners holds there. So I, I think they can be considered and should be considered together, especially as part of a holistic plan. And I think when we send this over to the planning commission, they should consider these things to be together.
Um, yeah, I'd like to echo on that because, you know, if you're, if you're going to come to, to us with a project and incorporate some of the things, hopefully a lot of the things that we've indicated tonight, um, you're, you're going to have, uh, uh, you're going to have a whole, an overall plan. I don't, I don't know what, uh, is this a billion dollar project with a B? I don't, I don't know, but it's a big one. And when you're planning that, there is a synergy and everything has to work together, or, or at least when you're going to come back with a design that I hope that we are, uh, asking for, a, a, a overall project before we start negotiating a, a full development agreement. Um, you're going to have to give the property owner certainty of what they can do. Um, because essentially, if you say there has, there can't be any ground floor residential in these areas, that means retail. And I'm not against retail, but in some areas, uh, retail makes sense and some other, other areas it doesn't. You know, we did that in Wooden Creek where they have, uh, areas of retail that make sense and are supported by the community and, 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 and by the city. And, and what we, what we absolutely have to avoid, in my opinion, is, is, uh, over saturation of retail, uh, that's cannibalizing business. And then we have empty storefronts and that's not good for our city. So I would encourage us to, to see an overall plan. And then we, uh, take this up and send it to, uh, a planning for a full discussion. So we know how it incorporates within, uh, this very important project. Deputy Mayor Randolph.
I, I was going to ask, I guess this was probably a question, uh, for Mr. Grunbaugh. Um, Mr. Grunbaugh, as we go through considering this, if we decide to reject this, do we need a motion for that, just to make sure what our next steps are?
So, um, I, I think I'll say this, you're all correct in the comment you're making about the code amendment, um, because the code amendment certainly does, um, have an impact, um, as to what would be planned with this project. But at the same time, when you're actually considering the code amendment individually specifically, you do that independent of the project because it, the code amendments are for the public interest and Green Partners could decide if this doesn't work, they leave, somebody else is going to come in, they would take advantage. So you're all correct in your assessment of the code amendment. And whatever tie, whether you want to add it or you want to wait, any of that works with us. Cause like I said, this is a pretty simple, um, amendment. So it's not going to take very long to run through the planning commission. There's not a lot to discuss about it because it's just basically a map amendment as to where you're going to allow it. So there'll be conversation about considering all this different stuff, but there's not much in terms of the technicalities of the code itself.
Councilmember Arn.
Thank you. Uh, just one question. I know part of this property is in the east frame and part of it is in, um, the CBD. And I'm just curious, when we're thinking about, um, the total retail spaces. Thank you. Um, so the portion that is in the east frame, uh, I know that the, the allowances for the types of retail that are allowed over an east frame are different than CBD. So I think I would like a little bit more information about what that picture looks like holistically. Um, because you're right, it is both related to the development and totally independent of the development, um, with the code amendment. So I, I do want a better holistic sense of what possible retail could exist in that space, given that it is so central to our downtown.
Yeah. And we just clarify, as far as the use itself, it's the same throughout the CBD, um, be, or at least between the east frame and the, uh, pedestrian core design district. What is different is in the east frame, you can have like the big box where you wouldn't, like in the pedestrian, um, area, that they have to be smaller. The vast majority of this project though, I think, I think when we did this before, at least eighty, maybe like 80% of it is in the east frame. It's only a small part of it that actually ends up being in the pet core part of it.
Okay. So, um, what, what size retail space would you consider a big box? Is it a certain square footage? Is it a layout type?
Our code puts a limit in the pet core, I think around 30,000, if I remember correctly, or somewhere right around in that area, um, where in the east frame, I think you can get up to over like a hundred and some thousand square feet. So big box typically is getting in that, you know, seven, 60, 70, 80,000 plus square feet.
Okay. So you could put a Trader Joe's on one side, but not on the other?
Yeah. Trader Joe's would not be, well, you could do it on both sides because Trader Joe's is, um, typically they're about 10,000, 12,000 square feet. So they, it could go anywhere in our CBD.
Thanks. I just had to throw that out there.
Councilmember Taylor.
So I'm, I'm kind of leaning into not making a decision without having facts. In that area, we had MOLBAX, we had, uh, tire store, we had, uh, some vision optical. We had lots of retail and we were receiving benefit from, from that for, for city rep, you know, tax. What do we think we're going to get for retail and what do we think we're going to have? And if we take that out of the, the block, are we really leaning ourselves out of retail, uh, tax dollars within the city too?
So the initial proposal, I think that was in one of the earlier slides. I think it's in there. They're proposing, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, but it's around 89,000 square feet. So they're roughly proposing about 89,000 square feet of, um, I would actually call it, uh, non-residential space because I'm, we think about retail, but restaurants and wine tasting could be all part of this. You could also potentially have some nonprofits or office spaces would all be potential uses that could go into this stuff as well. So, but they proposed around 89,000, um, square feet, uh, with this project.
But it, so, but I think the planning commission could probably take a look at, uh, the details of that. If, if you were to consider amending, what would that impact, uh, the retail or the revenue? And, and that's long-term, right? So that's over.
Yeah. I mean, right, cause, cause right now I don't think there's really any revenue being generated since I don't even know if there's anything still existing on the site at all. Um, although Green Partners has been trying to make use of some spaces if possible, but, um, I think the only thing right now we get out of that is property tax. So anything that's going to actually improve our current situation, but when you compare it to what MOLBAX had before, um, that's something certainly we can take a look at.
Just seems like we're eating away at our retail. Just seems like we're eating away at our retail and replacing it with residential. So, you know, I'd be a little reticent toward taking more, more out without having the facts or having a good trade.
Any other questions, comments? Yeah, I don't, I don't, I said earlier, I don't, I don't know what, what the tipping point is for retail or what type of retail, but we are adding significant amount of retail. We're adding a significant amount of retail across the street. We've added here, we've added over at Harvest, and we're going to have the opportunity to add it here. So I'm more, I, I want to see a, an overall plan. You know, if, if somebody's asking for something, in my opinion, something that's from the city, this is a, this is a partnership, a give and take, and we have things that we can ask for too. So I don't see that we're in a hurry to send this to Planning at this point until we get more information from the property owner on what their overall vision is, and then we can discuss it at that time and have more pointed questions and more well-thought-out questions. And, and so that's my position on that. Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, could I just suggest then, if you do a motion to table it to a future meeting?
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Given everything that's been said, I would put forth a motion that we, number one, get, work with Green Partners, wait for them to come back with a revised plan for us to take a look at with more clarity on the infrastructure being put in place where the city is not burdened by future delays, additional affordability, possible ownership opportunities.
If you're making, can you state, state your motion and then I'll call on you to support the motion?
Yep. This is, this is part of the motion, just because I'm stating every piece that I have heard to make sure that it is part of that plan and is on the record. Getting affordability first, something that highlights the future themes and aesthetic of the development. And to quote my son, I will save that part for my, my comment. But I think those were the, the bulleted items that I heard from everyone here.
All right, we're going to paraphrase that motion a little bit.
Okay, yeah, the, the short version.
Okay, we got it.
The, the short version, we're going to put this off until we get a more definitive plan that has everything that we've stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Deputy Mayor Randolph, you have the floor.
I think the only piece that I didn't hear that while I was sitting here stating off all those things, one of the things that hasn't been brought to the fore is it took Moleback's ten years to develop the plan that came before us that we decided on. I think people will be very disappointed if it takes another ten years. But following up with Councilmember Evans' input, it'd be important to bring forward the community, making sure that you're getting people engaged with this, making sure that all the ideas come into, to play. And as my, my son, and I have to quote him because this is his design aesthetic, it's not elegant, but unique, attractive, and not showy.
Councilmember Evans.
So as we start getting the new development back, and, and I know, Mr. City Manager, you work a lot with them, I would just like to put out there that we have an economic development plan, and I have been an advocate for an economic development contract or employee for some time. I think this is a really good project where they could weigh in pretty significantly to help us understand the short, mid, and long-term implications of things like this. And also potentially bringing very, very desired things like Trader Joe's here because I know we all have heard about that on social media. But in, in all seriousness, I, I really think that some of these decisions, it's more than just the code. It's what is the end-to-end impact on Woodenville, and do we have the right inputs to be able to, to make those decisions in a way that brings the community along? So I just want to put it out there that I think this is a really good project, an example of why we need a contract or something with somebody who can help us with that economic development piece.
Councilmember Wes Campbell.
I think there needs to be a lot of repairing of relationships. The community is very unhappy with the loss of Molebacks, the way it happened, the way the buildings were torn down, the way we've had a gravel lot for the last two years. It feels intentional that you left this big ugly gash in the middle of our city that used to be a garden center. That's going to take a lot for people to forgive. And we can have these pretty pictures and we can have these pretty plans, but without the trust that you're not going to do something even worse, like dig a hole and let water fill it in or something, it really is hard for the public to come along. And yes, you have rights to build these projects. Yes, we want to have a project built, but please understand that we're going about this in a slow way because there really does need to be understanding that this was the heart of our city, and you cut it out and that wound doesn't heal. And I think it's important that we take time, but I also think it's important that Green Partners takes the time and not just comes out and shows us the pretty pictures and promises, but take responsibility for the fact that you tore down the building before we could even put a plaque up that gave it a historical notation. That hurts. And I think that we really need to remember that Woodenville is a small town with small people, and we're a community, and we loved our Molebacks, and there has to be a lot of work done to repair the hurt and the heartache, and it feels very personal, and the community needs to back this before we can. So I would like to see really an acknowledgement that things didn't perhaps go the way that we had wanted, that it was really devastating to our community. And once there's a recognition of that and acceptance of really the decisions that Green Partners made, maybe we can move forward. But until then, I'm happy tabling this project.
Any other discussion before we vote? Any questions? Seeing none, can we get a roll call vote on it, please?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Wes Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Milman?
Yes.
Councilmember Art?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes seven zero. Let's see, this is item number ten, study session, critical areas regulation update, chapter twenty-one, point five-one, WMC, Mr. Grumball.
Right, Mayor, let me go ahead and bring this. Yeah, I just want to make correct, I think it was project permit procedures, what is the right, first reading of that we're doing next?
Oh, we're at number nine? I'm sorry, I thought we, yeah, you're right. Number nine, first reading of ordinance, number seven-eight-two.
All right, thank you. Let me go ahead and bring this up. All right, as noted, this is a first reading of ordinance, number seven-eight-two, related to permit review procedures. So just real quick on the background, a couple of years back, the state legislature passed Senate Bill fifty-two-ninety, which ended up making some major changes to the local project review act, which is in RCW thirty-six-seventy-B. This RCW is basically such a framework for permitting review procedures throughout the state of Washington. Most of the changes that they made went in effect back in summer of twenty-twenty-three. There was also a piece there regarding new review timelines that went into effect January first, twenty-twenty-five. So we are a little bit behind on it, but we're catching up here. And so it also, one of the significant pieces of this, besides these new timelines, was this provision about requiring refunding portions of application fees if timelines are missed. Now, there is a caveat, and then I'll explain that in a little bit. So that's what kind of started this. Separately from that, as I think all the councils are aware, and as we've talked with you about this, the city has been evaluating and looking at trying to make improvements to our permitting operations to improve services. And so while most of the changes relate to that Senate Bill fifty-two-ninety, there are also changes being proposed to be incorporated in here that will help us in implementing some of the process improvements that we're trying to make, to make our system, our permit review process a lot more efficient. So highlight of the changes, this is probably the key piece of the whole thing in that we have these new definitions and revised definitions. So project permits, which currently include like all of our land use, include basically all of our permits. We're narrowing down the scope on that per the changes that happened in the RCW, and we're mostly focusing that this definition will apply to like land use type of permits. Separately from that, then we're creating a new category of construction permits, and one of the reasons that we're doing this is because it affects how we then are applying the review timelines that are going to be, that are part of that Senate bill. So as I mentioned, this is out of the Senate Bill fifty-two-ninety that they have for type one decisions, which these are generally what are, are permits that don't require any noticing, and they don't generally have state SEPA involved with them. And so the new requirements around this is that we have to get the decisions out on these within sixty-five days. Type two decisions, which is the vast majority of our land use decisions, the new code has a requirement for a hundred days, and these generally involve noticing, and most of the time also have SEPA involved with them as well. And then our type three decisions, these are the permits that require the hearing examiner, basically have a public hearing in addition to the SEPA and other things that we mentioned as well. So three categories of decision types, new review times on that. But our construction permits, which typically are type one decisions, will have a hundred and twenty days as opposed to the sixty-five days. And part of this is just to reflect the reality of what happens with a lot of our construction permits here in Woodenville when we're doing the review. We, the vast majority of our construction permits, actually like our building permits, we do actually get out pretty quick because like mechanical and plumbing permits make up the vast majority. But when we get a building permit, some of these building permits, like on these mixed-use buildings, those cannot get done in sixty-five days. It's completely, it's impossible to do it because there are just too many things that get involved in it. And then on top of that, like when we get a building permit on a lot of single-family projects, we have a lot of critical areas that we have to work through. Again, not really possible to get through in the sixty-five days. So that's why we have the longer timeframe because it's more, it actually reflects what our current timelines are, and it's also more reflective to give us that time to be able to deal with some of the bigger construction permits that often we're working with. As part of this then, with these new timelines, we're adding new requirements for intake meetings, mostly applying to type two and type three decisions because generally the land use type decisions are more complex, and it's usually a good idea to sit down with an applicant before they submit, just to make sure that they actually got their application in order because we often see challenges with getting those permits and, and applications in order. So we want to have an intake meeting to make sure that when we're receiving it, it's actually in pretty good shape. We'll have it optional for type one decisions. Part of that is to be consistent with the ability to not be subject necessarily to the penalty at this time, but also it kind of reflects that building permits, particularly like mechanical and plumbing permits, you really don't need the, a mandatory requirement for like those simpler permits. So that's some of the big changes. Additionally, we're revising our optional consolidated review process. I won't go into all this entire details in the slide it's in, in there. Just want to note for you that what the optional review process is, is the ability of an applicant to have multiple permit applications consolidated under a single review process. So instead of having this done here and this done in another place, they can bring all these applications together, and they can have it consolidated in one noticing, under one hearing if there's a hearing, and also under one decision authority, although we do need to still keep a distinction. So we clarify this because, for example, if I have a land use permit that has the hearing examiner, and I have a building permit that's decided by the building official, I don't want the hearing examiner deciding the building permit because hearing examiner doesn't get into the technicalities and stuff. So there is clarification that some of these permits still stick with the decision authority, but for example, a site plan review and a design review, those can be combined under, if there was a conditional use permit, a hearing examiner could decide all three of those under one decision-making process. So the idea then is just to try to simplify some of this and create this opportunity. So if an applicant does want to do this, we kind of make it clear when you can use this, how it works, so that, that way we can make sure that when somebody does use this process, it's a lot cleaner than currently. Because right now applicants will claim the consolidated process, but actually they're not ready. Often they'll submit the building permit with concepts instead of construction drawings, or they'll do the site development permit with concepts, not construction drawings, and those things then end up sitting here because they're not actually ready to be received and stuff. So we want to make sure if you want to do a consolidated review process, that actually everything that is being done under that is ready to go under that consolidated review process. So we think this will actually make a big difference in helping to make some of our processes a lot more efficient because we do get caught up in a lot of just getting the right applications, making sure stuff is in properly, et cetera, et cetera. Some other things to note in here, new provisions were added for the order of processing permit applications. This kind of goes back to what I mentioned there a moment ago. If an applicant is not ready with a building permit, we don't want them to submit that building permit with a land use permit. They need to make sure that they've got the materials that are, give us the ability to review it, are submitted. And so this allows us basically if an applicant, because a lot of times they do, they'll try to rush to get their building permits in, we can go, hold on, you're not ready with that because you still got to get through all this land use stuff. You need to get this taken care of first before you do the building permit. And so this will give us that authority to be able to do that in code. And then also there were some pieces about like when an applicant modifies their application in a manner that changes the nature of the application. We've had this happen several times where we're at the very end of the process, and then the applicant suddenly wants to change everything. And so how are we supposed to handle that? Because basically the clock has been ticking, so we have a thing in here if it really significantly changes in a manner that basically would made it an incomplete application, we can start the clock over on that. And then another really important piece here is the ability to expire permit applications due to inactivity after the permit's been approved. Because right now, this is another issue. We'll have sometimes an applicant waiting six months, even wanting to wait a year after their stuff's all been approved to pick up their permits. Don't really want these things sitting around because it ends up wasting staff time, it ends up creating just a lot of inefficiencies in our review processes. We want to focus on people that are actually serious about getting the projects going now. So this gives us an ability to basically tell an applicant that if you don't pick it up within this timeframe, it's going to expire. Now, we do allow some flexibility because there are sometimes really specific circumstances, but it's pretty limited. We don't, we just don't want these things sitting out there for a year or two years before somebody comes and picks them up.
Councilmember Evans has a question.
Sorry to interrupt. If they, so if we are going to expire the permit application due to inactivity, which I agree, it makes sense, especially with these laws, how hard is it for them to reapply? Can they clone that application and then just add what was needed, or do they have to start all over from scratch?
Yeah, it's a great question. So basically, if none of the codes have changed, they can just clone it. And basically, you'll pay a new fee, right? There'll be a new application fee, and you'll do updates, you'll need to update your application materials. But usually, it's just like the cover needs to be updated, and you might have to do it a couple of days and things like that. But it's pretty easy to do as long as the codes haven't changed. But if the codes have changed, then, you know, any vesting, like for example with a building permit, you're going to lose that, and you're going to probably have to make more significant changes to the application.
And what kind of, so how long are we talking about? Within ninety days? So if somebody doesn't have it within ninety days, but they have it in, I don't know, six months, what kind of fee would they be basically double paying at that time?
Yeah, so I mean, basically, what this is talking about is the applications, everything's approved. So the only thing that's holding things up is them actually coming in to pick it up. So that's, that's the reason why this timeframe. It's not because, sometimes they want to wait because they're, they're waiting on contractors or they're waiting for the construction season to get a little bit better, or whatever it might be. So sometimes they'll ask for delays because of that. But they can pick up, this is a permit that is approved and is ready for pickup. You just are coming in, paying your fees and stuff. So as long as you're within that timeframe, you know, the fees, nothing changes. But again, if it expires and then you want to re-pick it back up, you'll apply and you'll pay the fees all over again, whatever the fees might be.
Okay. And do we have a communication system in place that, that notifies people, reminds people, lets them know you have, you know, thirty days, fifteen days, whatever, so that they're not caught by surprise?
Yeah, I mean, we notify applicants about picking their stuff up, and then also as part of this, there will be, we notify people when things are supposed to be getting ready to expire, usually because a lot of times at this point it's going to be email communications. But everything, everything official is done in writing, either through formal letters or through email communication. So applicants are aware, they are notified of that, but like I said, sometimes they'll go silent on us.
Okay. That makes good sense, as long as we're doing our due diligence to not surprise people. That's kind of the crux of what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Wes Campbell.
And you might get to this in another slide, but I was thinking about the functionality of providing a refund if we don't hit the timeframes. Who determines it? Who enforces it? Who sets the number? And are we policing ourselves, or is it something that is appealed to a higher power? If we miss the, either the sixty-five or the hundred days and all that, who, who determines what, what the refund is?
Yeah, so right now, we have, we'll have a reprieve because we meet the requirement to allow for a reprieve. But in a couple of years here, if we're not showing, meeting those requirements, then that, that reprieve, instead of being three, it goes to six, and if you can't show six of them, then this, this ends up hitting you. Basically, the, the way I understand the way it was set up, because I hadn't dug into it in super detail, but the way I understand it is you don't get to collect the full fee at the beginning of the process. What you do is you collect a certain percentage of it based on what the refund amount might be. So if the refund was So if the refund was fifteen percent, that may be the number, I don't remember, um, then you would collect eighty-five percent and then you would collect the other fifteen percent at the time of the decision being issued. Um, and so if you don't make the timelines, then you would not collect that fee at that time. I believe that's kind of the way, at least that's the stuff I read, I believe that's kind of the way that they were setting it up. Does that make sense?
Yep, and then just, um, we can still keep the fees that we've set, um, because we've set our development fees such that the applicants end up paying for the department. There's no change in the fees that we can levy and it's eighty-five percent of the X, which is our, our level. So that's not changing. It's just the percentage that we can, uh, that we have to set aside, I guess, for missing a target.
Yeah, basically, essentially, so if the fee, let's, I'm going to make a number of, let's say the fee was a thousand dollars for the permit. So if it's eighty-five percent you can collect, we would collect eight hundred and fifty dollars at the beginning of the review process and then we would not collect that other hundred and fifty dollars until the permit is approved and we're issuing the decision to them.
But as long as they're not telling us that we have to amend our fees, that the fee table that we've just gone through and, and changed, as long as we get to keep those fees, it's just the percentage that we collect at any given time.
Yeah, I mean, we just won't collect the additional amount.
Right. Gotcha.
Okay. All right. Um, other highlights, um, a couple of other things that I just wanted to note because some of the language for our impact fee stuff has some confusion and in cleaning some of this up, that we needed, uh, we needed to actually clarify that because this is actually an important part of the issuance part of the process. Remember I told you about there's an approval? What, some of the things that you have to do to be able to pick it up is that we send you also what your impact fees are and you have to pay those as part of the, um, issuance of the permit. But if you disagree with that, there is a process that's involved. So we have to, we need to bring greater clarity and that's what those provisions are doing. And then, I'm not going to go into all the detail, but, um, the, because it's actually technically in effect, but S P fifty-two ninety had this new requirement for completeness. The other thing I want to mention to you on this completeness piece, because a review process has a completeness and then a compliance review process. And then once the permit's issued, there's inspections and then close out that, kind of how the process works for construction and stuff. But one of the things that we do run into when we're going through completeness is that we get these applications that really have poor quality, but we don't get to evaluate that at the very beginning of the process. We actually don't get to do that until that clock I mentioned to you earlier, that sixty-five, that hundred, that, um, hundred and twenty, that hundred and seventy day clock, we don't get to evaluate the quality of it. If they bring in something that basically resembles one of the things on our checklist, then we have to call it good as far as the application coming in. So we can't necessarily guarantee the quality, but we are trying to do more front-loading with the applicant. That's what these, um, intake meetings and pre-apps and stuff are about, to try to do more up, um, front-loading. So the applicant, if they are serious about trying to get a good application in, we can help them more upfront to make sure the application is good coming in versus right now, the way stuff comes in and we're really not allowed to look at the quality of it until we actually have said the application is complete and ready for review and have to wait till compliance and that clock starts to tick. So, um, it's kind of a annoying thing, but it is one of the things the legislature did do, um, in the changes. Additionally, we added some clarification about how long site development permits are good, um, once they, as far as when they're active, once they've been issued, because we don't really necessarily have a timeline currently in there that's very clear. And then there's a lot, you saw a lot of other stuff in there because it's pretty long because I had to go through a, a code scrub. Um, and so a lot of this stuff in there, um, was just basically making updates where it said project permit, getting word into the word project and so it's just permit reviews and stuff like that. So it's one of the reasons why it is so long, um, including like you heard the comments earlier about the fire stuff. Mostly that was adding some information around expiration stuff, but most of it then was also just renumbering stuff. So that fire stuff in particular, because there's a lot of amendments we've adopted, made the packet a lot bigger, but, um, most of the changes are mostly confined primarily, the substantive changes are confined primarily to chapter twenty-one eighty. And then I mentioned about the penalties, um, and these are the three items that we are implement, we believe we've implemented. It's also outlined in the ordinance, imposing reasonable fees, budget for on-call help to assist with higher permit volumes, we have our consultants for that, and then the pre-application meeting being optional. Uh, we only man, uh, mandate that actually with a higher, uh, project permitting when you do a consolidated review and stuff. So, uh, we believe we meet those requirements, so we have a little bit of a reprieve, not to worry about the timelines, but as council's given us direction in the past, we are still going to be tracking all this regardless of the reprieve because our goal is to set these timelines and to be hitting those timelines with projects regardless of any of this other stuff that's going on with the Senate bill. So happy to answer any other questions, um, and there is a proposed motion up there for you.
Questions? Uh, Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. Um, so I just want to go back to Mr. Ramirez, um, comments at the beginning of today because it doesn't seem like this is really addressing, uh, kind of his desire to be able to lot split on the private road. Is there anything in this that is, um, preventing it or, uh, or addressing it?
This has no relation to that.
Okay.
Those comments are completely separate, um, from what's going on with this.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Councilmember Best Camel.
Um, I just wanted to thank you for, it seems like the last couple of years, the legislatures, we're almost done with something and then they throw something like one more big gigantic roadblock. Um, and I know that it's been a lo, is it five years that we've been working on permitting procedures and then we did with the fee and then we changed how, um, the payment is structured? I like that you have all of these stopgaps in place to make sure that permits aren't going to be missed. It also makes it easier on staff. It's easier and more efficient with your time because if you're constantly chasing somebody, um, if an application is partially completed but you can't review it at the beginning, it adds roadblocks and it is not the fault of staff. What you've done is you've provided all the infrastructure that's necessary for someone to submit a good permit. So any delays, I don't want to say we can blame someone else, but you know, for the most part, you've done everything that you can do. So I appreciate that you thought through the different, the mirror image of what your process is. So, uh, it's very thoughtful, it has a lot of stopgaps and it looks like we'll never have to have a fifteen percent refund because everything is perfectly, uh, organized and I know you're highly efficient, um, but we've just got those stopgaps just in, in place. So thank you for your work on this one.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I move to pass first reading this ordinance, number seven eighty-two, amending permit review procedures as presented.
Second.
A motion second. Uh, any discussion, Deputy Morando?
Uh, nothing to add. I do appreciate, uh, the amount of work that you put into this, especially as many bills that come through that require us to change many inordinates. So it, I definitely appreciate the work you put in, especially make sure these things stay aligned.
Uh, no other discussion? Uh, want to do a voice vote? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, now we're on to business item number ten, study session, critical areas regulation. Mr. Grumbow again.
All right, let me go ahead and bring this up and while I'm bringing this up, I just wanted to note, um, you know, we did a, you may have noted that we did a first reading on the project permitting, but on this one, we set it up as a study session. And the reason for that is, is that this actually is much more impactful to the community. So we wanted to give the council a chance, um, to ask any questions and it, and have a chance to really kind of dig into this because, um, some of the, this actually does have a major impact, um, because of some of the new requirements coming out of best available science. So this is a study session, um, talking about the critical areas regulations update. Um, just a quick background, basically, uh, which we are a GMA City Growth Management Act city, we're required to designate and adopt critical areas, um, using best available science. And there, in addition to the best available science, we also have a requirement to, to give special consideration to migrating fish. And so, um, and this is part of the periodic review. This is one of the mandated requirements of part of periodic review because we're not just doing comp plan updates, we also have to go through our development regulations and part of those requirements then include looking at your critical areas regulations to make sure for any changes in state law as well as for, um, any changes in the best available science. And so when we talk about critical areas, these are the main categories, wetlands, critical aquifer recharge areas, frequently flooded areas, geological hazardous areas, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. And I'll just note on the fish and wildlife, well, the main thing that falls under that is streams. So, um, it, it's more than just streams, but streams tends to be the main thing that, um, gets regulated under that. So a couple of other background notes on this, uh, just as what kind of went into the thinking that's in the proposal you've got there. So the critical areas regulations we're taking a look at and you have the proposal in front of you is dealing with what we would call our GMA critical areas regulations, which are in chapter twenty-one fifty-one. We do also have critical areas regulations in chapter twenty-one seventy-seven that apply to the shoreline area. So the state did this because they ended up deciding to split. You, you could have your critical, the same critical areas covering both, but then you'd have to go through ecology in addition to everything else in order to any time changer, uh, critical areas regulations. And so we wanted to keep those things separate. But what we did want to do, because we did the critical areas, or excuse me, the shoreline regulations were done not that long ago. And so that actually already incorporated a lot of best available science, although there have been a few changes that I will talk about in a little bit, uh, since then. But we wanted for trying to create a little bit more simplicity, making it easier both on staff and on applicants, we tried to make these mirror each other as much as possible. So there is, like, there was a lot of changes that ended up happening in twenty-one fifty-one because when we did the twenty-one seventy-seven update, there was major changes, reorganization to try to simplify and codify, uh, the shoreline critical areas regulations. So that's why there, there's a big difference in the structure. But in addition to that, there was new requirements regarding no net loss, which this was a shoreline requirement. It now applies ins- inside the GMA critical areas as well. Um, and then there was new stuff regarding best available science and then, I've already mentioned this about wanting to create greater, um, uniformity between the GMA critical areas and the shoreline critical areas regulations. And by the way, as I'm kind of going through this, if you have questions, again, feel free to, uh, interrupt me and ask those questions as we're going through it. So first I want to talk real quick about best available science because you'll see a lot of stuff thrown around on this. Best available science refers to scientific information that is produced through a valid scientific process. And you can see all the things that are basically are part of whether considered a valid scientific process. Um, I will note that in doing this, you, local jurisdictions and updating our critical areas, we can use either local, state and federal resources, um, or we can do our own effort on it. However, if we do do our own effort on it, you still have to adhere to specific criteria outlined in the Washington Administrative Code, which includes a public, um, outreach as well as it still has to go through state agency review. So not really, when we were going through this, we really didn't have the resources to do our own, so we've been relying on, and what you see in here has been a reliance on the state best available science and the recommendations that came out of their best available science that they had put together. Um, so important changes, I already mentioned about reorgani, this reorganization, so this, we reorganized twenty-one fifty-one to look a lot like the, um, twenty-one seventy-seven, the shoreline stuff. And so this is the outline on it, won't go through all the individual sections unless you have any questions on it. Um, otherwise it just, we organized on it. Um, these next couple of slides are just going to kind of highlight the changes that happened in each of these sections. So geological hazards, this is talking about, um, areas that are susceptible to erosion, sliding, earthquake or other geological events. And generally when we're talking about this, it's erosion hazards, which is talking about soils, landslide hazards, which is talking about usually like steep slopes, seismic hazards, what it sounds like earthquakes, and volcanic hazards and mine hazards. Now, the last one, volcanic and mine, we don't have those in Woodville, but we do have the other ones, the erosion hazards, landslide hazards and the seismic hazards all do exist here within Woodville. One of the things is our current geological hazard regulations in the GMA were kind of based on the overall concept of preserving, but actually in terms of geological hazards, we're not really trying to preserve because they're hazards. So when we made the updates on this, we were focused on more about the risk aspects of it, which allowed us to loosen up some of the regulations in there, um, being proposed. So that included, um, that the fifty-foot buffer that we have only applies to landslide hazards. Um, and then we also created some additional flexibility because we also, in addition to the buffer requirements, we have a requirement for building setbacks. And this isn't just geological hazard, this is actually all of our critical areas. But we eliminated entirely for geological hazards and then in the others, um, uh, critical areas, we created some additional flexibility so that could potentially be reduced because it was mostly about being able to do maintenance, um, if you needed to be able to do maintenance. Um, and then as I mentioned a moment ago, we clarified these regulations so that they're more about risk reduction and not necessarily about preservation of a, um, geological hazard. Uh, the next two I'm going to put together because these are, uh, pretty minimal things happen on these, critical aquifer recharge areas, frequently flooded areas, um, the critical aquifer recharge areas are more about groundwater, um, and they're, they basically contribute to groundwater quality. So we have some certain restrictions around that, not really a lot of substantive changes happened around it, it was mostly just cleaning it up a little bit. Frequently flooded areas, this is basically our flood plains, a lot of this is covered by FEMA and, and, uh, our flood insurance program. And so the critical areas piece has actually a biological component to it. Um, but we just did this update on, uh, the, uh, flood prevention stuff here a couple of years ago. So again, just minimal changes actually be, uh, um, in these sections, um, had occurred.
Council Best, Councilmember Best Camel has a question.
So do you happen to have a map of the CARA areas? I've not seen anything that's ever been really specific. I've seen Redmond's, which is somewhat specific, um, but for our CARA, do you have, is there a GIS map that we could eventually get sometime somewhere? I've only seen broad brushstrokes of where it could be, um, apropos of the NERTS. There, it looked like with the King County picture that maybe there was a CARA, um, adjacent to the NERTS project. Do we have anything that?
Yes, we do actually. Um, our critical areas, we have a critical areas map. It's, it's, um, it's not a regulatory tool, it's actually just an information tool because the only thing, um, that counts when it comes to critical areas is actually a site-specific analysis. The map is just a red flag to say if there are some critical areas on the property and then we make the applicant do further investigation. Um, so that does actually outline our, um, our CARA area, um, and, um, and is contained on there. So then that is often how, and I, I believe the, the, the science behind that was basically there's some aquifers, um, that are underneath Woodville. Um, and so the boundaries of those have been roughly mapped and it's the mapping of those boundaries that actually have been identified in our critical areas map as the boundaries of the CARA.
So those are, there's general areas, then is that contained in the, that's contained in the chapters? The map is, is in those chapters so we could see where that is?
Well, the reference to the map is, we don't have the map on the code, we actually put the map on our website. It's on our website.
Okay, so you can find it, someone can find it if they were to search, search the website for a critical aquifer recharge area?
Yeah, and we're working on the map because we were just going through to double check and do some updates because we have like, for example, we've had wetlands since two thousand sixteen that we've identified and so, um, we've been, with our GIS person, uh, she's been pulling those in and we've been working on updating the maps. Um, but the maps aren't formally, like I said, they're not a regulatory tool, so they're not formally adopted. Um, they're just an informational piece that we use, but the critical areas regulations do reference those maps.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions on these? Okay. All right, wetlands. So wetlands kind of had a, generally a little bit of good news and bad news on it. Well, not really as much on the bad news, um, but I'll talk about this in a moment. Uh, so basically wetlands are areas that are inundated or saturated by surface water or groundwater and under normal conditions support vegetation adapted to saturated soil conditions. The reason I read that definition is because oftentimes we'll think that if there's just water out there, that that might be a wetland. That's not actually, if it's just water, that alone is not a wetland. Usually it has to be supporting certain vegetation types that are conducive to normally these, um, saturated soil conditions. So there's a whole bunch of criteria that goes into before something gets designated. goes into before something gets designated. But I will tell you, Woodinville does have a lot of wetlands. Um, our area, the geo- the geography and stuff in here has produced a lot of wetlands. So, um, a lot of the wetlands play some actually very important roles in terms of habitat and flood control, and even in recharging groundwater, because often they service the infiltration to clean up the water before it can get back down into the aquifer. So they have a very, they play some very important roles. Most of the rules around these, though, are from state and federal requirements. So there's not a lot of flexibility when it comes to the wetland regulations, because the states and the feds have actually pretty much outlined most of the requirements on that. Um, what we did do, based on some of the new science, some of the stuff that came from ecology, we ended up updating some of the criteria for stormwater and passive recreational facilities where they're allowed in the wetlands, uh, to make them more objective. We also, um, uh, just did some general cleaning up, and I'll show you some stuff on the buffers here in a moment, to make them easier to follow. That was part of actually making it consistent with the shoreline stuff. Um, this next piece really doesn't ever hap- is rarely happens in Wood- I'm not going to tell you it never happens, because I think St. Michelle's may have, be having this situation occurring. But this, these provisions around compositor mitigation requirements, which this is talking about when you are going to impact a wetland, it's unavoidable, and basically you cannot replace ecological functions on the property. So basically you have to go to an offsite. And so there's a whole bunch of new requirements around that, that ecology adopted. Had to do a lot of work to try to adapt those things into ours. But I will tell you, from a practical standpoint, while it was a lot of changes, from a practical standpoint, we really don't see a lot. In fact, since I've been here, there has not been any applications, um, in my almost going on seven years now. Um, I have not seen any application for, uh, this kind of mitigation. St. Michelle's does have a little bit of it. This will be one of the first ones, but, um, in general, it just isn't done a lot. So we don't see that as being very impactful. There is another piece, though, that is a little bit more impactful, and this is this, uh, piece about new habitat corridor requirements that comes into play. But this is only when you want to do buffer reductions. Um, so the standards on buffers are, is that there is this, if you don't do anything, this is your buffer requirement. If you take these steps, then you can do these buffers that are slightly reduced. One of those things in taking these steps is if you have a habitat score, because one of the things when we're rating wetlands is we're evaluating its function as a habitat for, uh, whether it's fish or whether it's birds or whatever, it gets the scoring that's done on it. Six is actually a fairly high number. We rarely achieve a six habitat score in wetlands in Woodinville. Most of them, I think Amanda told me, I think are like usually around in the three, four, occasionally five range. It's pretty rare with six. But if you do have a higher, um, habitat wetland, had a higher category there, then if you want the buffer reduction, you've got to do some additional steps. That's a new requirement. And then, but on the other side of it, there were some new allowances about, uh, category four wetlands, where they don't necessarily have to have buffers if they're small, or you can fill them in without having to go through a whole lot. Uh, those were also from ecology's best available science. And so we've incorporated those. So in some cases, we actually were able to create some relief. In some cases, there are some additional requirements that happened. Um, and this happened with our buffers. Our buffers actually are either the same or they're reduced in the requirements. Um, and it happens just to be because of the way the, the new requirements, um, are occurring. So if we did have a, um, a wetland with a higher habitat score, it actually has a lower, um, buffer requirement than the current code does. So kind of some of the ins and outs on this, wetland had some things that got a little bit more difficult, but it also has some areas where there were some greater relief being made available. There's a question?
Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. Um, okay, so in this, I was confused by some of the written and public comments that we had, because I remember this information. So can you speak to what would change for this, for the projects? Because it looks to me like it's not a negative.
So that's going to be the next slide when we talk about streams.
Okay.
That's where their big impact, the wetland stuff is.
So the wetland isn't bothering them, it's the streams only?
Yeah, the wetland, the wetland pieces, um, uh, St. Michelle's is going to fill in a wetland in order to be able to punch one of the roads through, uh, to get access into the project. Um, and it's a low-grade wetland. And so that's going to go through federal permitting as well as our stuff. And so they're not having any real issues in, um, um, on that part of the permitting. They have to go through a reasonable use permit. Um, and if they don't get that, then they won't be able to do it. But in terms of the regulations themselves, the wetlands aren't really, they have not indicated those are creating any difficulties for them.
Okay.
It's going to be the stream stuff. That's where the challenges are, and I'm going to talk about that in a moment. Any other questions about the wetlands? All right, streams. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Areas, that's what the streams generally, uh, fall under. So, uh, just to note real quick, what is a Fish and Wildlife Habitat Conservation Area? These are the areas that play a role in sustaining needed habitats and species and contribute to the state's biodiversity. So streams are a, um, habitat for fish, and it's one of the reasons why the streams fall under this instead of under some of the other provisions. So we made an update to the, um, uh, Species of Importance list, uh, to remove the bald eagle, because that's actually the recommendations, because it's no longer in the endangered, um, um, list. And so recommendations were to remove it. So we did take that off. That's the only change that happened on that list. Now where the bigger changes are happening is involving the streams. So I'll start out first of all noting, we have four ways that we identify streams. Uh, S stands for shoreline. So this is only actually our two big rivers, Little Bear Creek and the Smamish River. Um, and those are actually not subject to these rules. S streams are subject to the shoreline rules. Um, and then we have F streams, which are basically year-round streams that, uh, support fish. NS are, uh, fish-supporting, but are not necessarily all year-round flowing. And then the MPs are not necessarily all year-round and do not have fish. Or actually, no, correction on that. The NS is, um, does not have fish, but is all year-round. NP is no fish, but periodic. The F doesn't matter whether it's year-long or whether it's, um, only partial. If it, if it has fish bearing to it, then it is going to be an F stream. So we're keeping those categories. Those are based on Department of Natural Resource definitions. The only thing I did there was actually just clean, I, uh, did some minor modifications to make the, uh, definitions of these more consistent with the Department of Natural Resource definitions. But from a substance perspective, nothing really changes there. What is changing, and this is the thing with the big impacts, is the stream buffer standard. So currently, we have these standards for like, based on F stream and P and S. You can see the numbers up in here. The best available science throws that out the door and now has this new thing called new, uh, riparian management areas. And this was a diagram that I drew up to try to help explain what it is. And so you can see there's many different parts to it. There is the actual stream channel, and then you have these different zones, and the riparian zone and zone of influence. The main thing to know about it is that the buffer consists of the zone of influence and the riparian zone. And more importantly, the basis of that buffer is this new standard using what is called, uh, potential, uh, tree height. Um, and this is a thing that's creating a lot of the stir, not just in Woodinville, but everywhere. Um, because basically what they did is that they, um, is that Fish and Wildlife, and they put a map together, and I think I included, um, um, a map that shows some of that information in your packet, although there are still some updates that have to happen with it. But basically, it's increasing by using this, it's a standard that applies to all streams. They no longer break it down by whether it's fish bearing or not. Um, the science says not to do that. So everything is based on this, um, site potential tree height. And they use, uh, the 200-year, because that is the old growth. That is the base of an old-growth tree. And that's what the, so that's what they base the standards on. And as I mentioned, so it does represent some significant changes. Um, so this is just talking a little bit more, this is in there. There are some situations where you might have the site potential tree height, um, below 100 feet, but based on the best available science, um, you still need to do at least 100 feet, because that's the minimum it takes to remove a majority of the pollutants. And when we talk about 100 feet, we're not talking about like a grass buffer. That doesn't actually, that doesn't perform that function. It won't take out 95% of the pollutant. What we're talking about when 100 feet, we're actually talking about one that is fully forested, vegetated, in order to remove 95% of the pollutant. So that's, that's where this minimum 100 comes in, um, and then using the, um, uh, potential tree height, which can push things out even further. Um, so, and I mentioned this, so Fish and Wildlife created this online mapping tool, which we're using to create a map, uh, so that we can put this on our website. Like I said, I still got to do some updates. I got to, our consultant put the initial map that you have together now, but I'll get with our GIS, um, person, and we'll probably need to do some further changes. Because one thing that's confusing about it is we included the shoreline streams on there, and the shoreline streams are not subject to this requirement at this time. They may be in a couple of years, when we have to update our shoreline rules, we'll see. But at least currently, they are not subject to this requirement. So I want to make sure the map actually reflects that. Um, so some other things, though, because this is kind of related to some of the concerns that you heard. So one very important piece that actually applies to both wetlands and will apply to streams, and the best available science supports it, is that there is this new provision about functionally-isolated and physically-separated buffer areas for repairing management. So same thing applies to wetland buffers as well. Basically, what this is talking about is if you have like an existing road, or if you have an existing building, or you have an existing like concrete pathway, um, I think I, ours, I think the standard we put in there is eight feet, based on, um, some other stuff that I came across on it. If you have that going across that buffer area, that is potentially, everything on the landward side, not the water side of things, but on the landward side, is potentially being cut off in terms of providing functions to that stream. And so there is an ability under the best available science, if you have existing development on the site, that existing development will let you exclude everything on the landward side. So where we have existing development, this is going to be a really important, um, provision. Now, they have to go through and they have to, they're going to still have to, if they have a degraded buffer, they're going to still have to increase the function of that buffer. But, and they'll have to go through an evaluation to, um, show that it is isolated, so it's not automatically assumed. But if it meets all these requirements, that's going to be big in helping existing development not suddenly be running into all these issues of non-conformity and stuff. You'll be able to tear things down, rebuild, because your buffer's going to be based on this shorter piece. On the other hand, if you have a property that does not have development on it, then this isn't going to work for you, because it won't be available to you. It's only available where there is actually existing development. So this, this is an important piece. Um, and then the thing that you've heard the comments about, um, earlier, uh, tonight, is about the urban stream designation. So currently, in our, um, in our critical areas regulations, not in our shoreline rules, but in our, um, uh, GMA ones, we have this urban stream designation that allows for you in our, basically our industrial and commercial zones, will allow for you to reduce buffers on streams, on fish-bearing streams. Um, you can't do it on the fish-bearing, but on the non-fish-bearing streams, where it'll allow you to reduce these down to 35 and 50 feet, or excuse me, you can do it on fish-bearing. It's 50 feet if it's fish-bearing, it's, uh, 35 feet if it's non-fish-bearing, um, that you can get this urban stream designation. So the problem is best available science doesn't support it, so that's why it's not in there any longer. We did, though, put some stuff in there. So for projects, for projects that have the urban stream, and Woodin Creek Village is our best example of it, that have done an urban stream designation and have built to that standard, they will get to keep that in perpetuity as long as the development continues to exist, so that if they make modifications, they're still good to go to keep using that urban stream designation. Um, so that was one of the things we put in there. Actually, Fish and Wildlife actually recommended that provisions, provisions like that being included. So we did include that in there. As far as these other projects, their concerns on these things go to whether there's, how the besting might work on their project. And the main thing I will tell you on that is that, um, based on some of the recent stuff around besting, besting doesn't technically exist in our codes or really anywhere until basically after you had a permit issued. So you actually need to go forward and do some work in order to get your besting on critical areas regulations. So to the extent, like the waste management folks discussion, and I've had this conversation with their attorney, they're moving forward with their urban stream designation, because that's their safest route. If they can get that completed, and we're actually getting close to being able to issue that, that is their most safest route to be sure that they're not going to run into any problems, because you don't know what the, um, what might come about with that, uh, functionally-disconnected piece. Um, so that's one of the reasons that they're concerned, because there is some, there is not necessarily some certainty. And I can't give them certainty, I won't give them certainty in a public meeting. I can just go over the things, and we talk with them of what the things that they can do and can be, uh, look at on these. And they should hopefully be okay, but you don't have uncertainty until you actually dive into the particulars of things. So they're moving forward on several different fronts for potentially being okay, because they already have existing development. And even this canopy they're adding is not adding anything in terms of new impervious surface, it's already over existing development. So that may create some flexibility for them. St. Michelle's, on the other hand, is a different situation. Um, they had an urban stream designation from, I think, about 13 years ago. They never did anything on it, so they lost, they lost it. And so this besting doesn't help them. And so they do have concerns about that. Um, to whatever extent they might be able to qualify with besting, it's hard to determine, because I don't know where they're going to end up on the critical area stuff, because the timing on this has not been going very quickly. Um, I also know that Green Partners also has an issue. They have an urban stream designation. They may be able to potentially best through that through the development agreement. That's one of the things we've been talking about with them. So there may be some other flexibilities with them. St. Michelle's probably the most uncertain one, because we don't know how fast they're going to move on their critical areas. We don't know how fast they're going to actually try to get their stuff in place. Um, so there are some uncertainties with their project, um, on how that might impact them. Um, but that's kind of where those things stand on that. The other projects have a little bit more, have better routes potentially. Don't have certainty today, because they are relying on some things, but there are some potential routes for them. St. Michelle's best route is that they need to speed up in getting their critical area stuff done. Um, I am also, um, in the, when we bring the ordinance to you, one of the things I am going to recommend is that, um, we make the effective date the end of July, um, not right after, because typically when you adopt an ordinance, um, and once Katie publishes it, it goes into effect five days after. Um, my recommendation is actually that the effective date is not until, like, the, uh, the beginning of July, to give people a little bit of time to try to work through these things and get their, um, like, for example, St. Michelle's trying to get that urban stream designation, which only applies to the commercials, the industrial side, not to the residential side of the project. So, um, that's kind of what you heard from some of the comments earlier in the meeting on this. So, um, the last thing I just wanted to note, and then any other question you might have, is that we also are, and this is reflecting middle housing, this is a little bit of a change for the R1 about the maximum building coverage, minimum lot landscaping coverage, and then street lot with requirements. And the reason why these are being, are being modified slightly is because the middle housing provisions, these are some of the changes we're going to need to be able to implement the middle housing stuff. So, um, within the critical areas, there's an ability to reduce some of your lot sizes because of the critical areas. And so in doing some of that reduction, having some flexibility with some of these other standards is going to be really important for the middle housing. So that's it all in a nutshell, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. That's a lot of information. Thank you, Robert. Uh, any questions for Robert? Uh, Councilmember Best Campbell?
I just wanted to say thank you. You've been, last couple of meetings, you've been doing a lot of talking, and this is a really exciting stuff, that I know you've been digging your teeth into for a lot of time. And these are not simple regulations. They're encumbered by state and federal, and I'm just crossing my fingers that federal just, they're messing with everything else. But please just let this stuff sit for a while, and let's let science be science for a change and not be politicized. So I appreciate the work you've done on this. I know Planning Commission consistently deals with this shoreline and critical areas, and they get the first bite at it. And what we get is the beautiful, pretty stuff at the end. So thank you. I know it's been a lot of long hours at Planning Commission.
And then we'll also note, too, this has been, um, because we got comments last July, I think I mentioned in the staff report from ecology, Fish and Wildlife and the Tribe. And Fish and Wildlife and ecology are good with the proposal. The Tribe wanted us to take additional things out, but because the best available science, uh, from the state agency supports what we put in there, we weren't recommending, um, taking those things out. Like, they, they wanted the isolated, uh, uh, buffer stuff, they wanted that removed. They wanted the, um, uh, type four wetland, um, exceptions removed. And like I said, the best available science supports having those in there, so, um, we did not recommend removing those.
Thank you, thank you, Robert. Uh, business item number 11, presentation of 2025 legislative session update, Mr. Hill?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members. Uh, tonight, I'm going to be providing you with a brief legislative update. The 2025 regular session began on January 13th and ends on April 27th. Uh, given the turbulence with the condition of the state budget, we would not be surprised to see a special session added. If that does take place, it can be no more than 30 days, and is convened by the governor or the legislature following adjournment of the regular session. We'll keep you posted on if, uh, we hear that's going to take place. Like I mentioned last week, March 12th was a major milestone in the session where bills had to make it out of their house of origin. Our next cutoff date is on April 2nd, and this is the policy committee cutoff for the opposite house. This is the last day to read in committee reports from the opposite house, except House Fiscal Committee and Senate Ways and Means and Transportation Committees. So there are still about four, there's still 40 days left until signed eye, but we are about two-thirds of the way done with session, so that's good. Uh, I know you have seen this quite a bit, so I'll keep this brief, but we have three, three key priorities for the session. It's the Tressle, the community center, and a fully funded education system. You have seen this, um, many times, so we won't dive in too deep, but we're continuing to advocate for our Move Ahead Washington funding and look forward to seeing additional budgets released, so we can see where we stand. Uh, we are also working with, um, Congresswoman Del Benet's office was very supportive in helping make sure our CPF funding, uh, was, we were able to receive the permitting needed to make sure our CPF funding wasn't at risk. Um, and that process is moving along as well. And in addition, we are applying for the King County Parks Levy Grant for our Aquatic Center, and that is in for the amount of $5 million, and we will be submitting that application by the end of the month. And then there are a couple of bills for your radar this week. Um, staff and AWC monitor dozens of bills, but there's just a few primary ones I want to make sure, uh, we take a moment to look at tonight. And the first one is HB 1217. As you know, Woodinville's locally-adopted tenant protections go into effect on April 12th. So we are closely monitoring what is happening at the state level. This bill passed out of the House on March 10th with a 53 to 42 vote, and is scheduled for a hearing in the Senate Housing Committee tomorrow at 1:30. The proposed bill seeks to enhance housing stability for tenants in Washington by implementing measures to limit rent fee increases, improve tenant transparency, and establish stronger protections for renters. Key provisions include a cap on rent fee increases to a maximum of 7% within a 12-month period, and landlords are required to- within a twelve-month period, and landlords are required to provide written notice of any rent increases. Additionally, the bill amends existing law to enhance tenant protections, including prohibiting landlords from charging higher fees for month-to-month agreements compared to longer-term leases, and caps move-in fees and security deposits to a maximum of one month's rent. There is some overlay in what was adopted locally, but we'll continue to monitor this and make sure whatever is passed out the state level meets, that Woodinville's locally adopted ordinance meets all requirements. And then our next bill here is HB fourteen oh three, and this is the condo liability bill. We've already talked about this quite a bit, but I wanted to add that this bill passed out of the House on March eleventh with an eighty-nine to seven vote and is scheduled for a public hearing in the Senate Housing Committee on the twenty-first at ten-thirty AM. In the same vein, HB fifteen sixteen is working to increase ownership opportunities by requiring the Office of the Insurance Commissioner to conduct a study on options for permanently affordable home ownership. Sorry, lost my spot there. The Office of the Insurance Commissioner to conduct a study on homeownership opportunities for, for creating more permanent affordability to reduce condominium construction, construction liability cost. And that bill made it out of the House with a fifty-eight to thirty-eight vote and is scheduled for a hearing in the Senate Committee on Business and Finance Services tomorrow at eight AM. So then finally wanted to hear, kind of touch on HB nineteen twenty-one and SB fifty-seven twenty-six. So these are the road usage charge bills and to help try and tackle the transportation funding shortage. These bills are seen as necessary to implement the budget and have not yet moved out of their house of origin, but they are exempt from that deadline. So there still could be action there. And given the twelve billion dollar shortfall, I would imagine that that has some momentum going forward. And adding to your radar this week is HB eleven eighty-three. This is a bill concerning building codes and development regulation. It made it out of the House on March eleventh with a fifty-eight to thirty-nine vote and had a hearing in the Senate, had a hearing in the Senate yesterday. There are some parking restrictions and building code requirements that we are still combing through. But as it pertains to our legislative agenda, we feel this infringes on local control of land use. The bill requires cities and counties planning under the GMA to modify setback, height limits, and gross floor area requirements for certain types of developments and modifies off-street parking and affordable housing unit size requirements. AWC has noted that while there are some prescriptive requirements, they were less worrisome than some of the items that were removed, that were removed from the bill. And they're still requesting amendments be made and have not put a support or oppose position at this time. Our state lobbyist sees this bill advancing. So staff is working now for, to have a further analysis on, on this available to you soon. We have comments back from the Planning Department and we'll communicate those to AWC and work with our state lobbyists to make sure the concerns are with the appropriate parties. And that wraps up my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Hill? Same. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
That brings us to our next business item is our executive session. All right. Do we want to move to public comments and report city manager and council members, then executive session? Okay, well then I'll move that down. Public comments. Same rules before, when I call your name, come to the microphone, state your name and whether you live in the city limits, and you'll have three minutes. Ahmad Amiri.
Thank you again. I just want to thank Mrs. Evans for clarification. And that is part of my miscommunication or miss, I tried to get this clarified earlier today. I couldn't. And I have a, I, and instead of talking again, I believe I have five minutes, not three minutes, but if I'm not mistaken, but three minutes, all right? And I make it very short actually, because there's no need to. Again, I appreciate your comment to clarify that. And I ask staff, please clarify certain things with me, otherwise I'm going to waste your time. And if I come to them short, they can clarify certain things. I ask Mr. Granbach, Mr. Granbach, please do that. Mr. Azusa, please do that. Make those appointment with me that I could clarify certain things that I'd be able not to make certain comments. But regardless of all of this, affordability, as you're saying, is very important. Believe me, affordability is important. I speak from this benefit to homeowners is important. I'm a problem solver. I cannot play chess in two. Two move. Why? Because nothing works in two moves. There are families that they are in need of, their son comes to them. The grandson comes to them, like me. I have seven children. I need them to be with me. But if I get blocked because we didn't think about it, yes, it's going to be blocked. If you're looking at it, the, even in five, I believe, if you look in five oh three point two point one, which it says that fire department again is able to make a decision and if Mr. Granbach make a decision, then there's another block, there's another block. Please take those block away for homeowners. Make it easier for them. That's all I'm saying, and I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Port City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As noted, we'll have an executive session this evening. The only other item I have, and I know that all of you are on pins and needles as much as I am, waiting on a decision on NERTs this week. I am told by King County Sawway staff that that decision is anticipated for Friday. So you can rest easy or easier for a couple of days and then really get anxious on Friday. So as soon as I know, I will let all of you know. Thank you.
Yes. Counsel, okay, sure.
I'm Barbara Lau. My training is as a hydrologist. I actually stayed here not because of Green Partners, but because of the critical area ordinance. And I just wanted to remind you guys that the best available science is those nice wide stream boundaries. There's that stream in going right through the grassy area of Chateau Saint Michelle and the stream that feeds into Woodin Creek, I believe, through Green Partners area. And the reason that they have these boundaries increasing is not only to support fish, but to keep the temperatures cool in the water. And that is a really critical thing for the Simamish River. Simamish River is dredged, it's filled with sediment, it's shallow compared to what it used to be. The temperatures are really high. And that's where you're getting your fish mortality because of lack of oxygen with heated, increasing temperatures. So I, I really hope that you guys understand that science and why they're doing that. And you know, rather than scooting through Chateau Saint Michelle, make sure that they follow the best available science. That's all.
Thank you. Port Councilmembers, Councilmember Evans.
So I just want to thank North Shore Middle School for having me last week to speak at Career Day. It was a fun-filled, six separate sessions, complete with a city council showdown where kids got to debate different things. It was really fun. So thank you for that. And I also just want to let everybody know that our East Rail Regional Advisory Committee is going to have a all-day offsite on June thirteenth. So any community members that want to make sure that they talk to me about their pollinator pathways, their B city, you know, all the different things, let's make sure that we connect before then so that I can take all that into our planning. Thank you.
Councilmember Edwards.
No report this week.
Deputy Miranda.
We've had a couple of our community conversations now. I would like to say those have been fantastic. We've had an opportunity to speak with our local constituents and I would encourage people to continue to attend those and pay us a visit during the next couple of, so we can find the best timing for, for our constituents. So that's all.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
Just a quick idea. I know that Waste Management had said that they were going to do push notifications via their app, but is there a way that we can maybe piggyback on that if they're sending us emails on service disruptions? I know we have abilities in the Woodinville Works app. Is this something that we, we might want to consider? Because asking people to download another app when they're already sort of frustrated with waste management seems like tempting our fate. But if we could get it sort of piggybacked onto our app, I think that would be a really efficient use of it.
Councilmember Miranda.
Thank you. Just one issue I wanted to bring to staff. In a community discussion a couple of weeks ago, I was hearing a lot of feedback about the newly realigned intersection near the Arabian Horse Farm that actually it, the new intersection design is significantly more dangerous than the previous intersection, which we all knew was a fun time for everyone. And it's primarily traffic coming from Kirkland from that direction. And it had to do with where the stop sign was placed relative to the intersection. Because it was so far back from where traffic was crossing, people were either stopping once and then moving forward to see and then maybe stop again or maybe just keep going. So based on feedback from residents up in that area of the city, it, it seems like it's creating some problems there. And I would love to see if staff could just take a look at that. We don't want to increase issues at an intersection like that as we're adding population to that area.
Councilmember Taylor.
Nothing more to add. Thank you.
I apologize if I said this before, but I've had some, I've had some more action or more meetings. So I met with the Seattle World Cup Organization on what, what they're doing and possibly bringing some World Cup-type events to Woodinville. There's seven hundred and fifty thousand tourists coming to Seattle in summer of twenty-six. And they, they have opportunities for some, some licensing to authorize to, to have viewing events. I've reached out to the Saum Hotel because they would be, they'd be an ideal venue to accommodate that as well as Chateau Saint Michelle. And I've had a conversation with Woodinville Chamber of Commerce on how that could be incorporated. And I've, I would encourage the city, us as a city, to consider how we could bring some events to, for example, an attendance of viewing party at Wilmont with a, with a, some type of screen similar to our Celebrate Woodinville, but this would be a viewing event for, for the World Cup. And some of the events are on, one's on Juneteenth and another one is near Pride. So we have opportunities for that. Anyway, I'd like the, the city to look into that at some future time. Again, it's, it's, it's summer of twenty-six. And I know that City of Redmond is pretty far along in their planning. So that might be a good resource for us to look into and what they're doing and, and learn from, learn from what they've done and wouldn't do again. So, and that's all I have. We're going to adjourn for an executive session. Let's, let's, can we adjourn in three minutes, five, four minutes, five minutes? Let me read the appropriate verbiage. Executive session of council will adjourn to a closed session for approximately fifteen minutes to discuss with legal counsel, I think that's optimistic, to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency, the governing body, or member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party. When public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency, RCW forty-two point three zero. It's adjourned for fifteen minutes in three minutes. We're back in session. No formal action taken.
Most of you to adjourn.[1776.62]